Motion.
We don't need a motion.
I don't know.
Oh, to reconvene.
Yeah.
Reconvene.
Motion to convene the study session. Is there a second? We have a motion to convene the study section. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none. Study session. Um, is there any comments from the public? Seeing none. Um, motion to reconvene, um, and begin the study session.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Jordan and Executive Cabinet. Tonight, we're presenting to you our budget study session for twenty-five, twenty-six budget proposal. We're gonna present this to you, and tonight, we will have our notice of public hearing, and then at the next board meeting, we will be asking you to approve our budget proposal for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So, good evening, everyone. So, I'm gonna go over the, um, the overview of the discussion that we're gonna have, uh, tonight on the agenda. So, basically, we going over the, uh, the requirement for the, uh, the budget revision, and recover the major funds that we are having right now, and the district's ongoing challenges that we are, uh, working with, and, uh, we're gonna present some historical data and the projection, uh, for the financial status for the twenty-five, twenty-six and the two hour years. And, um, we're going to go over the multi-year projection as well. Next slide, please.
Ed Code require us to submit a positive qualification, sorry, positive certification for our budget. And tonight, uh, we are presenting you a positive certification. Uh, what it means is that, based on the current projection, that we will meet our financial obligations for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. However, there are other, uh, circumstances that we will walk you through our budget to avoid, uh, qualified or negative certification in the future. And, um, the only way that we can submit this to the county office is to have a positive certification, and, um, and we will work with them on any questions that they may have regarding our certification. Next slide, please.
So, our district major funds, excuse me, the district major funds that you can see up there, uh, mainly the general fund, that is something we present every time that you see in the adoption, the first interim and second interim, we are, uh, talking about, uh, the general unrestricted and general restricted fund. That's what we usually focus on. But the rest, you can see there, we have adult ed, uh, the adult education fund, child development, student nutrition, specifically serving building fund, and so on. Uh, tonight, we're gonna be focusing on the general fund. Next slide, please. The ongoing budget challenges, as you might already seen before, um, the cost of living, and, uh, that is one of the challenges, that we don't get the same COLA like every year in the previous years. So, it might be less. And the enrollment status, we might have, uh, declined in the enrollment. That could impact our funding, and there is an increase in the cost of salary and benefits, and the state and federal funding might be reduced, and we don't know the official answer yet, but that is some of the challenges that we are dealing with at this point. Next slide, please. So, statutory benefits and health and welfare benefits, that are the two benefits that we have to, um, go with every time that we pay an employee's, the benefits always tag along with that cost. So, we break it down to, uh, to major portion, the statutory benefit and the health welfare benefit. So, the statutory benefit, that is something that is the ongoing cost that we incur every year. As you look at the history, it's always increased year over year. Uh, comparing to these STIRS benefits that we see here, we don't see the increase because the state has been helping to pay the differences of the increase. On the purse, we are getting the increase every year. As you look at the twenty-five, twenty-six, that is twenty-seven point four. At twenty-six, twenty-seven, we get twenty-seven point five, and twenty-eight point five, and so on. That keeps increasing. That's gonna impact our budget as well. Next slide, please. And health and welfare, that is, uh, the, uh, medical coverage, just like dental vision, that is the cost that we have to incur as well, besides the statutory benefits. These two benefit costs, we're looking at around forty-seven million dollars a year. So, for the health and welfare benefits alone, that would cost us twelve million for twenty-five, twenty-six. That is a big number when we are talking about benefits overall. It's gonna take off about twenty-two percent of our general expenditures.
Quick question for you.
Sure.
Does that include, um, health and welfare benefits? Does that include the different types of insurance that the district has to have? Um, 'cause we do know that, um, like, for example, I don't know if this is directly connected, but, um, some of the insurance providers in the state have asked for the ability to raise their rates. So, do we calculate, um, our insurance or additional insurance costs on an ongoing basis as well?
Um, the health and welfare benefits that's associated here are usually our United Healthcare, our Kaiser, our Delta Dental cost. Um, we are part of Santa Clara County SIG, so historically, Santa Clara County SIG's rates have been lower than CalPERS's medical rates. Um, so that's been helpful to our district, but, um, that's just the cost for just the district's portion of the health and welfare. The significant impact that you do see in twenty-five, twenty-six from our budget projection, one of the primary reasons is because as MTA negotiated the cap increase, that's why you see a significant jump from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six. So, the cap used to be the twelve seventy-one, and then now, we increase the cap to be thirteen seventy-one per employee, per FTE, sorry.
Um, it prompts another question, but, um, we'll circle back on that in terms of, um, as we go through the presentation.
Okay. Uh, next slide, please. Um, you've seen this chart before. This is our enrollment history. This is the seven-year trend. Um, I want, uh, if you can focus on twenty-four, twenty-five, which is right in the middle. So, that's our current year. What we wanted to highlight here is at current year, we are funded based off of our P-two, which is ninety-seven, seventy-nine. Um, one of the things that we want to highlight is at current administration, current laws, we can, are funded off prior year, current year, or the three-year average. So, in twenty-five, twenty-six, for our budget, we are basing it off of prior year, which is twenty-four, twenty-five's ADA, and then in our multi-year projections with Dorothy will go over, is off of a three-year average. Next slide, please. Okay. Now, for our budget projection for twenty-five, twenty-six, this is the breakdown of our general fund revenue. Most of our revenue comes from our LCFF, which is from our district ADA. Uh, it's at a hundred and twenty-four million, a hundred and twenty-five million approximately, which is seventy-six percent of our general fund revenue. Um, other local revenues is about four percent, so that includes both of our parcel, uh, proper parcel tax measures. And then you're, so you see the special ed revenue, other state revenues and federal revenues. Um, state revenues are inclusive of your lottery, your expanded learning opportunities, your CT grants, things like that. For our twenty-four, twenty-five, we did make a note here, our estimated actuals revenue is about a hundred and twenty-one million four ninety-one, and that jumps to one hundred and twenty-four thousand, a hundred and twenty-four million seven forty-six in twenty-five, twenty-six because of the COLA, because we are still basing on off of prior year ADA.
Quick question. What do you mean by STIRS on behalf?
So, STIRS on behalf is, there's a portion that the state covers the payment of the STIRS pension for certificated, and, um, the STIRS on behalf that we're putting on our budget is just for recording purposes. So, we put the same exact amount in the revenue and same exact amount in the expenditure. So, when that we submit our financials to the state, they extract that information, and then that's what they provide, uh, that, uh, they give or pay to the STIRS on behalf of the districts. Uh, so this is a support that they're giving the district, uh, that's been, I think, around for at least ten years, and they continue to match that, whatever that, based on the calculation. This calculation come from the county office, and then we have our auditors review the calculation, make sure it's accurate, and then that's how, so STIRS on behalf is practically just for recording purposes. It's an in and out in our books.
Uh, next slide, please. Okay. This is our general fund expenditures, so we were approximating our revenue to be a hundred and sixty-four million. Our general fund expenditures for twenty-five, twenty-six is about a hundred and eighty-one million. Uh, the big chunk, almost eighty percent of our expenditures are in personnel cost, um, which is, which is the norm for most districts. Um, certificated salaries, the breakdown is about eighty million. Classified salaries, about twenty-five million, and health and welfare benefits, like Duke mentioned, is about thirty-nine million. Next slide, please. Um, we included this. This is the ratio percentage of our general fund positions. Uh, this is a breakdown specifically in terms of what percentage of our expenses are tied to our FTEs between, um, our certificated, our classified, and our certificated versus classified administrators. So, our certificated classified administrators, um, salary and benefits are about eight percent, whereas our certificated salaries and benefits is about forty-eight percent, and our classified salary and benefits about sixteen percent.
So, I need some clarity. If we go back to previous slide, I see benefits, including health and welfare, thirty-nine, um, million or twenty-two percent. Um, then you go to the next slide. Could you show me that twenty-two percent?
Um, what we did is that we broke it down between the cert, so in certificated salary and benefits, the eighty-seven million, that's the salary plus the fringe benefits. So, when you're looking at the, the, which one, the twenty-two percent here, you're, that's the combination of health and welfare benefits plus the other fringe benefits, so, for everyone.
Other fringe benefits. So, those aren't, so those aren't broken out?
No, those in the, in the pie graph, those, the thirty-nine million, it's the fringe benefits plus the health and welfare for all employees.
So, that's fringe ben, that's fringe benefits, including health and wellness?
Yes.
So, we don't see the twenty, and then the next slide?
And then the-
We don't see the twenty-two percent broken out in the same way, 'cause it's included somewhere in the forty-eight and the sixteen?
Yes.
And the six and the two?
Yes. We wanted to break it down just so, um, that there's clarity on how much of that thirty-nine million is in each category, so whether it's in certificated, classified, or manage, or management.
Okay.
President Norwood, the pie chart that you're looking at is at the high level of the breakdown of our expenditure at the highest level, and the next, um, this chart is breaking it down by the classification of the positions and expenditures. So, when you see the twenty-two percent, it's for all positions, uh, both classified and certificated. On the pie chart of forty-four percent, those are only salaries for certificated, and the fourteen percent is only for classified. And then the next slide is where we break it down, where including the salary and benefits for those classification. If you add all the forty-eight, sixteen, six, and two, it will come up to pretty much the same percentage because we collapsed it, but this time, we kind of break down into a, a little bit more detail rather than the high level.
So, hypothetically speaking, if you had, uh, positions, have you, have you, how you have this listed out? If there was, um, um, a row that was specifically fringe benefits, that fringe benefits plus the health and welfare benefits for all employees would equal that twenty-two percent?
Yes. Is that something you wanted to see in the future?
Well, so I would just tell you, following these numbers all the time, we're always looking for ways to connect the information from the previous chart or the previous sales spreadsheet, so it all begins to make sense, right? Like, there's never been a mention of fringe benefits. Like, there was a comment earlier about the reason why the, um, the health and welfare benefits went so high was because of some reason of, because of MTA, and I'm like, well, I don't know how to connect that to the context of this conversation, because I'm not gonna see that anyplace else in this document, right? So, I could kind of have to figure out what that is, or, or have someone ask a question about what, what the, that was meant in context.
Got it. And the increase in our health benefits is not just because of the MTA. It's also because of the natural increase of the, um, escalation of the insurance cost that goes up every year.
And that was the question in part that I was asking about, insurance costs going up every year?
Yes. But Santa Clara County School Insurance Group that we are a member of, we get a much better pricing compared to others. If we go directly to CalPERS, for example, that, uh, the reason we get a better pricing through, uh, Santa Clara County School Insurance Group is because we are a pool of different districts, many districts, so they can bargain at a much lower rate because there's multiple members of districts that are a member of that, so we get a better, uh, discount.
Awesome, and I just make, and I would just make sure that we advise, when you make statements like, this happened because of a particular, uh, association or group, without that being one-hundred percent accurate, is problematic.
It's just one of the reason, but it's not the only reason, yes.
But in context, you know, it's prob, it's problematic, right? 'Cause what'll happen, maybe one board member would ask the fact, superintendent, well, what does that mean? We don't, we don't remember when we, when there, you talk about the negotiations that this was going to. So, again, we wanna make sure that we just have apples-to-apples conversation. Appreciate that.
Copy that.
Okay, uh, here's, uh, looked at our FTEs. Um, our, the MT, the certificated FTEs is about five hundred and thirty-seven, which aligns with our projected expenses. Next up is our classified group, which is about three hundred and twenty-four FTEs. And a total, so if you're looking, so that's for our general fund. Then we also broke down the FTEs and other funds at the chart below, between adult ed, child development, student nutrition, building fund, and developer fees. And the combined total FTE for the district, it's about nine hundred and ninety-three FTEs.
I also wanna add that, um, our projection of nine hundred and ninety-three point twenty-four FTE total, uh, there's a possibility that we will increase the certificated, uh, positions by seven or average of seven due to the, um, increase of TKK enrollment at some of our elementary school sites that we didn't capture when we were finishing up the budget. So, once we have the final numbers of our enrollment, we work with, um, uh, Human Relations Department in finalizing the number to make sure that we have the accurate FTE allocated for each school size based on the number of students and grade levels that they have.
TK is, is, is that funded? Because of, the reason why I asked at the beginning of your presentation, one of the things that you said was that we had this soft declining enrollment, but we know that we've added TK, and TK is bringing students into the district. So, uh, so if TK isn't funded, right, then the soft decline, I can recognize. But if it is, then I'm, I gotta just have some clarification on that.
So, TK is funded, but it's not funded fully as the, um, first grade or kinder through twelve. There is a small dollar, uh, that is, uh, embedded in the LCFF calculator that the governor has authorized to put in there. It has increased slightly from, um, the previous year. I believe it was three thousand something per ADA, and this year, because he was, he's implementing that ten-to-one ratio for TK, and it has risen up to five thousand five hundred, which is already embedded and calculated in our hundred and twenty-five million LCFF revenue, which you will see on the next slide. So, this is, uh, this is the slide that I'm talking about. When, uh, we're looking at the base grants based on our LCFF calculator, you will see that our base grant for TK through nine to twelve is slightly different based on the grade span adjustment, uh, on the grade, uh, levels. And then we have the, uh, two-point-three COLA added into it, so the twenty-five, twenty-six base grant is the third, uh, row from entitlement factors per ADA. And on the bottom, you can see that transitional TK add-on is the five thousand five hundred and forty-five. That used to be three thousand dollars, and the governor's initial, uh, proposal was a little higher. It's a little over six thousand dollars, uh, in the January proposal, but in the May revision, it became five thousand five hundred. And, um, we will see if this is something that the legislature will approve. And if, if it's approved, it will remain this way. If it's not, based on their proposal, it might change, and we will reflect that in first interim.
Ken, and do you know what is the expected fully funded number? Is it the six thousand something for TK?
There hasn't been any set amount to say this is how you fully fund. In, in my own opinion, it should be fully funded, just like any other grade level. If TK two-three is funded at ten thousand two hundred and fifty-six, I feel like, uh, TK should be the same because of the, so many requirements that has imposed on us in a smaller class size, and also, we need a para to support the teacher because of the smaller group size, and, you know, being there very little, always needs supervision. But the, the state hasn't really set to say this is our fully funded TK program, but, um, we're waiting for that to have, to, to see if it will happen. Next slide, please. This is our multi-year projection that you cannot see, so you have to squint your eyes. Uh, hopefully, you can see a little bit bigger on your, uh, laptop.
Do we need Scott to zoom in a bit, or we're okay?
Can you zoom it a little bit, Scott? Maybe can you zoom it on the pink color?
Um, I have to take it down and then, hold on.
Okay, so, um, for the, the first three columns, the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals, as part of our budget adoption, we have to compare what we think we will close the books as, which is the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals, and compare it to your twenty-five, twenty-six budget adoption. So, I know it's really hard to see, so I will kind of read off of what our combined revenue of our estimated actuals is about a hundred and sixty-four million, and our combined expenditures under our estimated actuals is about a hundred and eighty-five million. That means that we have to transfer in funds about fifteen million to go ahead and balance our budget. In order for us to do so, we had to balance our transfer funds in from our special reserve funds. That's about five point six million dollars. We had to transfer in funds for our Fund Two Hundred, which is about another one and a half million, and the remaining comes from our building fund, which is about eleven million dollars in order for us to balance our books for this year. Um, Dorothy will talk about our budget adoption, um, for, and the next two years.
So, the three columns in green is our proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see that we're using the nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine LCFF-funded ADA with the two-point-three COLA, and we have a forty-eight point twenty-seven percent of, uh, UPP, unduplicated people percentage. Keep in mind that the revenues and expenditures that we, that we are showing in our budget adoption doesn't include any carryover. This is, uh, as, uh, state practice that if we have any carryover, uh, that we don't budget them, we only budget what we expect to receive as a revenue from, uh, the state or federal, and, um, and we use our, um, best scenario that we could find from the state and federal on how much revenue we'll be getting. So, if there's any reduction in federal, uh, funding, for example, it has, it's not reflected here because we don't apply it until we hear otherwise.
Could you please make it full? Would you please make it full screen so we could see what's on the left bar?
So, if-
And presentation rather than slides?
So, if you want me to zoom in on it, I have to leave it like this. If you want it full screen, then it's gonna be small, or, do you want full screen? There's no, like, this, I can manipulate it here, right? But if I go to slideshow, then I cannot manipulate it right there. It stays like that.
I could see it on my computer.
Can you open the PDF instead?
We can. Well, on our computers, we can-
Yeah, we can see it on the computer when you have it in full screen.
Scott, if you go full screen, and then everybody just increase their zoom, they use their zoom.
Like this then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can, we can, yeah, we can zoom in.
All right.
So where are we?
So we're on the revenue. You could see the comparison of our revenue from estimated actual of 121.4 million for our LCFF, and we estimated 124.7 in 25-26. That is where the 3 million increase that we calculated based on the 96.86 ADA percentage that we're using in 25-26. For special education, you can see that we are including the... Special ed has a state revenue and also receive a portion of the local property tax that is not subject to LCFF. We have about 5 million for federal and 12 million for state and about 3 million for local revenues. And here, this is something we break down this year. So you could see our parcel tax measure E and parcel tax measure Q that is included in our revenue projection. So we're estimating 164.6 million revenue for this year based on the information that we have during this time. Our total expenditure, this is exact same number that you see in the pie chart earlier, is about 181 million, broken down by the classification or if expenditure for certificated salaries, classified salaries, benefits, supplies, services. And we have about 4.4 million that we are transferring from building fund, which is our RDA money that we're still receiving. And we're using this as to... I apologize, 5.7 million that is to match our RMA, which is the routine restricted maintenance account. State used to fund this back in the days before LCFF. And when all the restriction went away, become LCFF, the state no longer fund our RMA, but they continue to require us to have a maintenance of effort. It's about 3% of our total expenditure be set aside for routine restricted maintenance account. What that means is this is the expenditure or account we can use to pay for our grounds, our maintenance, operation, transportation, technology that supports the district operation that is related to our facilities. Our total expenditure is not 5.7, but that is the maximum that we just to have the maintenance of effort. So the rest goes into general fund because our expenditure is a lot higher than 5.7. 4.4 million is a transfer fund that we are pulling from Fund 21 to balance our budget for 25-26 because the state requires us to have about 6.6 million in our reserve. This is the 3% of our total expenditure. And we have a legally restricted ending fund balance of 734,000. And the site carryover that you see here are pretty much the principal discretionary and the school fundraising money that even though we're sweeping all our general fund dollars at the school site, that they're not, they're no longer allowed to have carryover for 24-25 as part of our cost management. This carryover is actually the money that they raise at their school site and something. So that's something that we don't touch because this is money that they raise on their own. It's not the district funds. But the district managed those money. And we have a small dollar amount that we set aside for our liabilities such as prepaid expenditure stores and some revolving cash. In our year one and year two projection, 26-27, 27-28, this is based on the three-year average of our LCFF-funded ADA. COLA is at 3.02 and 3.42 respectively. The January governor's budget, COLA was projected to be 2.43 for 25-26. But we end up having a lesser COLA, which is 2.3. The out-years COLA was estimated a little higher also in the January governor's budget, but when we received the May revise, it's slightly lower. In the 25-26 expenditure budget that we have in the column of restricted, we have a lot of positions that we're paying out of our grants that are ending in 25-26. So this is something that as soon as we close the books for 24-25 and we know how much carryover we have, our actual carryover is the work that we need to do to identify what are we gonna do with those positions? And what other grants we can use to fund for the position for the time being? And look at our total expenditure on how we can make some reductions and make a plan for cost management so that we will have a balanced budget without relying on our Fund 21 fund. I'm gonna stop here to see if there's any question. I know I said a lot.
Any questions from the board?
So Dorothy, for the emergency block grant, how is it that we are trying to project for the three-year down the line?
The emergency block grant, we have some leftover funds, but I believe that has ended. But we have until 27-28 to spend whatever we have. And we are using those funds for some positions. And we're working with learning...
LND.
LND, Learning and Development. Executive Director Johari on how we can maximize these grants. At the same time, look at the possibility of what are the positions that are being paid for by those grants that are ending?
Thank you.
If there's no question on this slide, we can move to the next one. This is the summary of our reserve fund and the building fund. So the top one is our special reserve fund, Fund 170. We had a total of 5.6 million remaining funds in this fund, and we are depleting it in 24-25. We're transferring the entire 5.6 million to help offset our budget for 24-25. So as you can see, we won't have any more funds available in the starting 25-26. The second one is the post-retirement fund, Fund 200. We had $2 million here, I would say, two, three years ago. And we transferred about half a million dollars last year. And the leftover funds of 1.4 million is also being transferred to the general fund in 24-25. And so we're depleting this account. So you can see in the out-years starting 25-26, we will not have any more balance in this account. The bottom one is our building fund, Fund 210. This is not including our bond fund. That's completely separate from this fund. So we have bond fund and building fund. Bond fund, we only use it for our building, construction, phase three, and MHS PAC. Fund 21 is our ongoing fund where all our leases, for example, revenue comes into this fund because it's for our facilities and our buildings. We, in 24-25, we started the year with 28.7 million. We transfer 5.6 of that as the... I'm sorry, we receive 5.6 as a revenue from RDA, the redevelopment agency revenue. And then we estimate about 1.5 in lease revenue of all our unused property that we are leasing to other entities. We projected 800,000 for interest, and we had an expenditure of 3.4 million. Some of this are positions, very few positions, but mostly are related to our building repairs and projects that we do that is not covered by bond. We transfer $400,000 to our deferred maintenance fund, which is 140. And then this is the 5.8 million that we transfer for our MA. And 2.6 will be transferred to general fund to finally balance our budget in 24-25. These numbers, the transfer that we're doing in 24-25, could change depending on how we finish or close the books in 24-25. Around August and September, we will have our un-audited actuals. We will have a final number on how this would look like. In 25-26, we're starting the building fund with 24.4. Again, these are the revenue and expenditure and transfer. And we will continue to transfer funds from Fund 21 to balance our budget. And that is why I mentioned about cost management, to make sure that we don't keep tapping on our building fund. Otherwise, we will deplete that fund faster than we would hope for. Next slide, any questions?
Dorothy, just, what's the importance of the building fund?
Say that again?
What's the importance of the building fund?
Did you say importance?
Yeah.
The importance of building fund is when we have facilities that, we all know we have aging facilities. And if we have some, say, safety hazard, safety issues on a site that we need to repair ASAP, this is where we pull the money from. We can't rely on bond because bond is for specific purposes. For repairs and replacement of something that we need for our school site, this is where we pull the money. If we have a leaky roof, and sometimes we, you know, it could cost millions to replace entire roof. So what we would do is we would repair a portion of the roof, and those funding will come from Fund 21. So the importance of keeping those funds in Fund 21 is to make sure that we have money when there's safety issue and repairs that needed to be done right away. And we can't wait for a new money coming in. And so right now, we're relying on the lease revenues that we're bringing in and the RDA, but we're using RDA to match the RMA. And as you can see, because, for example, Montessori, we will lose the lease from Montessori in 25-26 because of our phase three development, and we don't know where they're going yet. So we anticipated that it will be a little lower in our revenue. So increasing the revenue will help our Fund 21 boost that balance. But at the same time, we can't keep using it as a transfer into balance our budget in general fund.
CBO Rekonose, could you tell us where the developer fees go? And also, are developer fees something that the district receives only one time when the developer moves in, or are they ongoing?
So the developer's fee is in a different fund. I believe if we go into that slide that Duke mentioned, it's in Fund 35.
Fund 25.
Fund 25, I apologize. So in Fund 25, this is where we deposit all our revenue for developer fees. What it means is if someone is trying to do an extension on their housing, on their property, they get a permit, and they would submit the permit, and then they will have to come to us and pay the developer fee. Either it's the homeowner or their construction company that they hire to pay the developer fee. So that's a one-time money that we receive from them. And then once they pay the fee, then they can go back to the city and say, I already got that approval from LPDAS. I paid the fees, and here is, you know, then they will be issued the permit.
And would you also share with us what the limitations are on the developer fees, what they can be used for?
So developer fee, we can only use it for brand-new school classroom, for example. So if we need to add a new classroom, I'm gonna use TK as an example. If we have to build a new classroom for growth, if we have an enrollment growth and we need to put in a new classroom to accommodate those growths, we can use developer fee to fund that classroom so that we, those students will have a place of learning. And instead of using our general fund, we can tap into the developer fee fund to fund for those classrooms so it doesn't hurt our general fund dollars.
Thank you.
And at the same time, we're earning revenue for having those students in the classrooms.
Yeah, so where is that developer fee? Is it in here?
It's not part of our multi-year projection because it's a separate fund. But if you go into slide... District major funds. I don't know what page that is. It's this slide. If you go into the district major funds...
I think that was like the second slide that we saw today.
Yeah, either the third or the fourth slide. You would see the developer fee is in Fund 250. And we don't include it in our presentation, but it is included in our Saks report that is attached in our agenda. So all of the funds that we have, it's all included in the Saks report because it's a state requirement that we report every single funds that we have. But for the purpose of presenting the budget, the majority of our expenditure comes from general fund. That's why we focus on general funds. But if you wanted to see how much money coming in into our developer fee, it would be in our Saks report, which, you know, I can show that to you.
So Dorothy, your estimation based on our district and our size and our facilities, what do you think is a healthy balance to maintain in the building fund?
I can't exactly tell you how much, but the more money we have there, the better because the cost of building and repairs is very expensive, and it increases year after year with the CPI index. With, you know, now we're talking about tariffs and availability of the work. Sometimes the labor cost goes up. So I don't have that number for you because it's really sometimes unforeseen circumstances that there might be a given year that we only spend, say, $2 million for repairs, but there might be a year that we end up spending $10 million because, you know, it's a massive damage on a big roof, for example. So it's hard to tell, but it's... Having that healthy fund balance there, I would say, you know, in around the 20 millions is really helpful so that we don't have to tell the school sites that we don't have money or, you know, it's not part of the plan. So what we're trying to do is come up with all the problems that we had at the site and then look at what's the most priority that's urgent, that is safety issue, so we can address that right away and then move on to the next list.
First, you know, I was at a meeting and speaking to some old timers around buildings, and they were talking about 40 years, the life expectancy. And then you amortize 2% or 2.5% a year for that 100% of the value of the building because usually, school buildings get redone every 40 years or so. So what it's actually supposed to be, which no school district can ever do, is 2.5% per building per year. Because in 40 years, you're gonna need a new building, right? But no one is ever able to do that. So, or to put that kind of reserve in. So I appreciate what Dorothy's saying. Like, we do the best that we can with the maximum amount because what ends up happening after so many years? School districts go out for bonds to do new buildings and also repairs in certain areas of certain buildings as well because they're never gonna be able to reserve that amount in a building fund when you have salaries and other things that you need to take care of within a district. I found that fascinating, but it totally made sense in terms of, you know, building 40 years and that type of thing in public governance spaces.
Yeah, and we've seen historically, like, the sites last 50 years or extend to 50, 60 years before we go out to get bonds to repair them. So we fully maximize, you know, the time expectancy.
And I think because we're planning to have a facility master plan conducted in, not just at the district office because that's what we did last time before the bond, but having that facility master plan for all sites, the entire district and every single site so we can see, they can identify areas of what areas we need to focus on. And then they can give us an estimate how much it would cost. And I can tell you right now, our ending fund balance in Fund 21 will not be enough. That's why going through a bond process is the best way because most districts don't have enough fund money, balance in their building fund to cover all the costs of it.
No, absolutely. And I see that currently, we were at, what, above 20 million? But, you know, the three-year projection of the rapid depletion to 4 million, that's a concern, and so...
Yes, and that's... And, and that's where our cost management planning will come into play, so to make sure that we don't get into this space. This is our projection. If we continue to be as is and, and status quo, this is what it would look like. And this is the only, this is the only way we can present it to you at this time because we can't make an assumption what the board would, which direction you would want us to go. So once, you know, so this is an information for you to digest and see what direction you want the district to head. And, you know, and we recommend cost management because this is the one way for us to avoid being in this position, you know, down the road.
Great, thank you.
Dorothy, quick question before we move on. I could see that one of the major funds for our district is like, for any district for that matter, is Fund 110, which is adult education. And for the federal education 2026 budget proposal, it says eliminates adult education. Can you speak more to it, please?
Can you point me to the direction that you're looking at?
It's, I think...
Are you looking at the multi-year projection?
Yes, I just have the slide four that you were pointing at, the Fund 110 for adult education. And then I think in the budget proposal, it's page 14 that I see, like eliminates adult education. Page 14. Slide 14.
We know that it's in the proposal right now, but we currently budgeted based off of the numbers that we do know. So we still are anticipating this current revenue as it is. We haven't heard back. We are part of a consortium for our adult education. And as we speak, we are still planning the same expenses. Now, if the proposal goes through and then our adult education is no longer funded, then that would probably have to be absorbed somewhere else. But as we speak, we are still anticipating revenue. It's just a proposal.
Proposal, okay. Thank you for that.
I apologize, I didn't realize it was adult education.
You're good, thanks.
Can we move on? Next slide, please. You've seen this slide before. This is, this is extracted from our SACS report. This is showing the ending fund balance of our restricted fund. What we estimated in the 24, if you look at the second column from the right is our 2425 estimated actuals. This is what we believe the most accurate we can get in how we're ending the year with all these restricted funds. In 2526, this is going to be what's left after using some of the leftover money from 2425 to fund for those position. I highlighted three specific grants here because these are the grants that are no longer available for us. We still have some ending fund balance that we are spending, we're allowed to spend it, I believe until 2728 or 2627, depending on the grant. Our educator effectiveness, that will be completely gone by 2425. And we have until June 2026 to spend that money, but we're anticipating about $3,000 left in 2526, which I know it will be, we can easily find an expenditure for it. The second, the highlighted column is the Arts, Music and Instructional Material Discretionary Block Grant. We have until June 2026 to spend it and we're estimating about 2.5 leftover money in 2425. And we will use that money to fund for position and we only have 400,000 left in, at the end of 2526. And the last one is our Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. We're expecting a 3.4 million leftover money in 2425 and about 1.1 million in 2526. So these are the grants that are very critical for us to look into because these are the funds that the state will no longer give us in the coming years unless something has changed based on the legislature budget. But the information that we have right now, these three grants, we will no longer have these funds.
Quick time check, Dorothy.
This is our last slide. Well, actually, no. Last slide, please. This is just the assumption that we included in the out years. I'm not going to read you this, but this is what we use to project for 25, 26, 27, 27, 28. Last one, Scott. Sorry, it's not the last one.
So that is the important date for your references coming up. We have the budget and L cap approval. And then some point at July, that's when we start the 25, 26 years of the enacted budget. Early September, we go on to close the book. That's the time where we'll be able to see a number clearer at the end closing. Early October, we go in to do the budget revision of the first interim report for the board to see what's the current status of the whole year 2526 going to look like. And then we will hear from the auditor to present the audit report to the board members. And then early January, that's when we start looking at the second interim to get a better idea of how the year going to look like in terms of expenditure and revenue. So those are the important dates that we have to look into.
And that concludes our budget study for tonight.
Are there any additional questions from the board?
Actually, can you go back to your slide just before this last one? Just on your assumptions? Thank you. There we go. Enrollment projection. In each of the years, what is the TK delta that you're assuming? Or are you, are we at the point where fully, basically, that is all the TK we're, we're going to take? Trying to understand, are we going to continue seeing more TK enrollment?
The enrollment projection we use for 26, 27, 27, 28 is based on the demographic report. So it's pretty stable, there's no significant increase. And so based on that projection, we follow that for 26, 27, 27, 28.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, any questions from superintendent or executive cabinet? Okay, I'd like to, for a motion to conclude the study session?
Move to conclude.
Study session.
I'll second.
Thank you, man. We have a motion to conclude the study session in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries, study session is concluded. Scott, we're going to take a five-minute and then we're going to come back and get the board meeting started. Thank you.
I'm your 2025 Board President, Kristin Norwood. Welcome to the meeting of the LPDAS Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for Open Meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style meetings online, either on Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom here at Randall World Languages School. Public comments can be made while you're on Zoom or in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Closed session announcements.
In closed session, the board unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation to accept the resignation of two certificated managers. The effective date will be June 30, 2025. In addition, in closed session, the board unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation to reassign Kristen Prolo from co-principal to principal of Robert Randall Elementary School. The effective date will be July 1, 2025. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Is there a motion to review and approve the open session agenda?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve the open session agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. It's time for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. I do have one item on action. Item 21A Business Services to pull motion, pull item 21A, aye. Approved Swear and Change Orders, pound eight through 11 for MHS Performing Arts Center.
Thank you, President Norwood. I wanted to pull that and we will bring it back on June 24th as a mini-study session.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained? Any no's? Motion carries, the item is pulled. Thank you, Superintendent. And thank you for doing the pledge of allegiance. Public comments. Scott, are there any online public comments?
We have no hands raised online at the moment.
We have public speaker card. We have one here from Ya Ting. Go to the microphone. Scott, how long does she have?
Two minutes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ya Ting. I'm the model of three children. My second child transferred Randall last year in November. And my youngest will be starting TKD school in August. Last year, we made the decision to transfer my daughter from previous school because her previous school think that my child is autistic, so they eventually give her out. After transferred to Randall, she has made so much progress. Not only the teacher had been willing to help her with HTR funding with the program, now she's able to speak three languages, speak good Chinese, Spanish, and English. I'm very proud of my daughter, but all those progress and the pride comes from the school, come from incredible support from the teacher. We bought a school. We bought a school, I don't, my daughter won't be where she is today. Cutting funding will mean fewer resources and more pressure on already hard-working educators. Our children deserve stability and support, especially during this critical development year. Every time I come to this school, Randall, I feel so much warmth and hope from this community. I'm always happy to step onto a campus where I can feel the school dedication to helping every child shine like a superstar. The school has made great progress over the past year. With enough funding, it can grow into a wonderful trilingual program that more and more family will want to join. A school like this give a parent real hope, hope their children can learn and grow in safe, loving, and high-quality environment. Cutting the budgeting now will stop this amazing progress and take away chance from children who already benefit from this school program. Please, both considered a student for their future, I ask you to continue to invest in our school and prioritize funding that allow teacher and staff to succeed. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Jordan, I know that recently we approved additional curriculum for Randall. If we can direct a communication to the Randall community as far as a couple of the board actions in support of Randall, that would be appreciated.
Sure. And there is actually something going out about the principal right now.
Great. Thank you.
Alicia Salgado. Salgado.
Thank you, Board Executive Cabinet. I am Alicia Salgado, and I am representing Milpitas Teachers Association and CTA. I would like to ask the Board to consider making a resolution for the call for establishment of paid pregnancy leave for educators and support for AV65 authored by the Chair of the California Legislative Women's Caucus. The State Superintendent of Public Instruction, the State Treasurer, California Legislative Women's Caucus, Health Access to California, the California State Teachers Retirement System, the California Work and Family Coalition, California Teachers Association, and other organizations have called for the State of California to establish paid pregnancy leave for educators. So I would like Milpitas to join the above organizations and support AV65 in the 2024-25 legislative session authored by Majority Leader Cecilia Aguiar-Curri to establish paid pregnancy leave for educators. Where workers are far more likely to stay with an employer, who, where they feel rewarded and valued, and paid pregnancy leave is high on the list of desirable benefits. I have a resolution from CTA that I can forward to both Superintendent Jordan and Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, are there any additional public comments?
Yeah, we got about five written public comments, a couple of which came in right before the meeting started, and then a few that came in after the meeting started. They're all regarding school budgeting at Randall. Did you want me to go through each of them?
Yes.
Okay. We have Lauren, or LP Peterson of San Jose, has a TK student at Randall. Hello again. The parents of Randall are still disappointed by the 33% budget cut and still don't know why it is necessary. We see construction expenses 10 times what we are asking for approved without hesitation, but programming dollars for elementary schools is scarce. What will our board be doing in '25, '26 for elementary schools is scarce. What will, oh no, what will our board be doing in '25, '26 to make sure our most vulnerable students don't regress? We're not sure, but we now know that asking the board for help is not the way forward. We are losing Ms. Cadenas and our TK teacher, Ms. Savala, but at least we now know that the way to solve this is not by attending these meetings. I'll be spending my time looking for private sponsorship instead. Please reach out to me at LPET@icloud.com if you think you or your business can help. Katrina Knickerbocker of Town Drive with a student at Randall. I'm disappointed that the school board has chosen to follow the lead of Trump and cut resources to the communities that need, that need in most in our school district. Cutting funding more at Randall and other schools when Randall families are least capable of providing the same programs without district funding. Randall has the highest percentage of low-income families, unhoused families, foster youth, ELL, and Hispanic families, yet you protect the budgets of schools with more Asian-Americans, which makes the majority of voters in Milpitas. After being on our campus and seeing what our students go without is hurtful to hear, you are choosing to turn your back on our community. Jane Kim of Canton Drive, student at Randall. Randall has been an amazing program that helps bridge the community with English-only speakers and Spanish-only speakers, a large part of the community. We are an English-only speaking household, and my second grader is now nearly fluent in Spanish due to this program. I also have a kinder who is well on his way. They are able to communicate and play with children of different languages due to this program. The school is beginning to gain more traction, and it will be a disservice to the community to cut the budget so much. Please reconsider. I'd be happy to speak on this more if given an opportunity. Thank you. This is Myra Tostado, East Capitol Avenue, has students at Randall and Rose. I'm asking the Board to reassess how resources are being allocated to ensure Randall Elementary is getting its fair share. Our students, many of whom come from low-income families, are just as much a part of this district and community as students at any other school. They deserve equal access to high-quality facilities, programs, and support. Right now, it feels like Randall is being left behind. That's not, that's not just unfair. It's unacceptable. Equity means giving every child what they need to succeed, not giving more to schools than already have, that already have more. Please take a hard look at this year's budget and make sure Randall isn't getting the short end of the stick. Again, our kids deserve better. And this is from Frances Miranda of La Honda Drive, student at Randall. Today, my sixth grader was promoted to middle school. We have been fortunate enough to be one of the few kids who started at kinder and stayed through to sixth grade and have seen the school and our children transform. When we heard Randall was facing budget cuts, we knew we had to share our story. We are a family of six, long residents of Milpitas. We are Filipino and not native Spanish speakers. The easy decision for my family would have been to go to Kurtner, our home school and one of the top schools in the district, the school that is right down the street from my house, where my nephews and nieces go to and where me and my siblings went as children. But we did not make the easy decision. Seven years ago, we chose Randall so our kids could learn Spanish and benefit from smaller class sizes. Throughout the years, we found that we didn't just opt into learning Spanish, but we opted into something much greater. Through watching the principals, admins, and teachers, our children have learned dedication, commitment, and compassion. When my son's class needed teachers, it was Ms. Prolo and Ms. Cadenas who stepped in to teach classes. On any day in the school year, you would see them addressing each child by name, hands-on with the children and teachers. On any given day, you will see kids hugging their teachers and witness parents who are committed to volunteering hours upon hours on top do their, on top of their workdays to give back to the community and students at Randall. I'm very proud of the years I spent at Milpita School, from Kurtner to Russell to MHS, but what I witnessed every day at Randall for the past few years has been level of dedication and caring I have never expected or seen. My children are excited to come to school every day and see their friends and teachers. As much as such, we proudly make the choice to continue opting into the program every year. It was not the choice that was convenient or easy, but it was the right choice for our family. We implore you to reconsider budget cuts at Randall to please support the administrators, teachers, students, families who were disproportionately affected by program and budget cuts. Last sentence, it is not the easy choice, but it is the right choice for families and dedicated teachers and admins at Randall. Thank you for your consideration. And that completes the online rating.
Thank you, Scott.
Before we go on, President Norwood, I have talked with Executive Director Jahari, and she's reached out to both the co-principals to figure out an intervention plan budget and has also informed them that Think Together will provide the after-school athletics that Little Heroes provides. And so, Executive Director Jahari, will you convey to me the outcome of your meeting with Ms. Prolo this week?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent and Executive Director Jahari, for hearing the concerns of the Randall community and being in communication with the leaders. I know that we're at the end of the school year, but as soon as that can be made, resolved, and also communicated out to the Randall families, that would be helpful. Thank you, Scott. For a second time, we will bypass item 14, MUSD Strategic Goals, and we'll go straight to item 15, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Norwood. I will start with recognitions tonight. So in our school district and community, we have a large number of our youth who participate in different service clubs, such as the Boys and Girls Club and Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. And tonight, we have two who have spent time building library seats and other things for Weller Elementary School. And that is, and benches, and that is Sophia Doe and Emily Doe. Sophia attends Middle College High School, and Emily attends Milpitas High School. So if we could have the two of you come on up. And while our board and governance team is coming up, would each of you share one of your projects that you did? Tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, so one of my projects was at Palmroy Elementary School, and I built a bench around a tree. I felt that a lot of kids after school weren't able to properly sit down while they waited for their parents, so I felt that building a bench in front of the parking lot would allow them to sit down and do their homework.
In a similar way to Emily, I built a bench near the entrance of Weller because I noticed that they have no seating arrangement area, especially when they wait for their parents to pick them up. In addition to that, Emily and I built a library, a mini-library there in order for kids to, while they wait for their parents, to also get in some reading.
Thank you both. And if we could have Mr. Doe come up and join us for a picture, that'd be great. Principal Wallman, if you would like to join us as well? Next, we have our Science Olympians, and we have our three coaches with us tonight. We have Ms. Lita Meyer, Mr. Glenn Barrett, and Ms. Sharon Dip. And we have, well, yes, let's give them a hand, a round of applause. And we also have some of our student competitors with us. I'll read some of the names that I have. Kavia, Joyce, Ethan, Nevada, Dylan, Suha, Darren, Anaya, Owen, Aditi, Sagurika, Neil, Charles, Huang Jiong, Brianna, and Sri Rong. If you could all come on up, and if I miss somebody, let me know. Ms. Meyer, who would you like to be our spokesperson? Okay. We're our three captains.
Hi, I'm Ananya.
I'm Aditi.
And I'm Darren.
And we were the captains for the '24 to '25 school year. So I just wanted to say a little bit about like what the SILEE community meant to us and what we learned. SILEE itself taught us so much about what it means to be a community, what it feels like to be able to unite under this like common passion for science. In other words, it gave us like a really safe space to just nerd out and learn. We learned so much about leadership, about managing teams, and most importantly, what it means to love something so much and give it our all. So it was an experience I would not trade for the world.
Yeah, and it also taught us a lot about science because, you know, it's like in the name. So, yeah, we learned a lot about science. We all did different kinds of science, and it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, and it's also just all the fun and good memories that we all have together.
The end.
And are there any parents or family members out there? Okay. There we go. Please join us for a photo. Thank you, everybody. And next, I would like to recognize three of our teams that are often behind the scenes, that we don't remember often, that they are the part of the engine that makes things happen. So I would like to invite our Business Services team up. And we have with us this evening, we have Ms. Kelly Ing and Train, and also Duke and, you know, Dorothy. And then online, there is Sheri Ames, who is also our CICA president. And I think online too, we have Sandy Nguyen. And Sandy is in charge of our student nutrition. Are we able to split screen all of them? Are we able to split screen all of them?
We're asking.
Okay. So while you're taking care of that, I would also like to share that the Business Services umbrella also encompasses Student Nutrition Services. And we have Sandy Nguyen and Fatima up there, and we have, is it about 105 student nutrition team members across the district who make sure that we have lunch every day for our students and, in some cases, also breakfast. Who would like to hold this one? Okay. Yep. And then we also have our Maintenance Operations and Transportation Team. And they, as their name indicates, they make sure that everything runs, looks great. And those leaky roofs that we talked about earlier, they work to make sure that those are filled in. And online, do we have Van and Jesus online, I think? And our team is made up of a handful of supervisors. We have three supervisors, and we have a director. And they lead about 70 custodians and eight people who work in transportation, and then about 25 who maintain our grounds, and also our miracle workers who fix the buildings and make sure that things look great. So I'd like to thank our Maintenance Operations and Transportation Team as well. Duke, would you mind? And then we'll go over there to take our photos so that Sandy and Fatima can be there. Next year, a new addition under the Superintendent's Report will be, in addition to school reports, we'll also have department reports. And we'll be able to recognize our team members there, similarly to what we do with Maiden and MUSD with our school teams. How many of you listen to KQED? KQED, if I could have a different job, that would be it. So I was super excited when Ms. Saaji Kim from the Milpitas High School Extension let me know that we were picked for KQED takeover. And so I'd like to recognize Ms. Kim, if you could come on up. And our students who participated, Brian Nguyen, Patrick Glasterich, Samir Sharma. And who wants to tell us about the KQED takeover?
My project personally, or just in general?
So the takeover was basically a partnership with KQED. They actually came to our classroom and they led little workshops with our students directly to coach them into really making like a couple-minute multimedia video or video essay on any passion topic that they wanted. And so every student actually was able to create one, and we submitted them all to their little takeover challenge. And actually, two of our students got selected to be aired on the broadcast. And so, Brian, why don't you tell them what your project was about?
In a world of so much uncertainty and divide, I wanted to choose an event. If you remember last December, the martial law in South Korea, I wanted to share that because it really harbored the message of humanity's ability to unify and work towards a better goal. Obviously, the rally and the cancellation of the martial law brought by Yoon Suk Yul. So we know a lot of people that struggle with procrastination, and over winter break, me and Patrick found a method to avoid procrastination that worked out pretty well for us, and we just wanted to share it to everyone else, as we all struggle a little bit with procrastinating.
And speaking of Maiden and MUSD, tonight's school highlight is Milpitas Adult Education. And we have our classified person being recognized for Maiden and MUSD is Melanie Davis. And our certificated person is Lisa Lau. So if you could come up with Principal Brahim. And Ms. Brahim, would you share with us a bit about Lisa and Melanie? And then Lisa will ask you to say a few words as well.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you.
And we have Melanie Davis attending a conference in Orange County. That's why she can be with us tonight. And I'm really proud of the leadership of both of our classified and our certificated Maiden and MUSD. Lisa has not only been an extraordinary colleague, but a very important mentor and leader in an ESL program. And we have grown together as we have grown our school and our staff, and also, most importantly, our students. So congratulations, Lisa, and I know that we appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, really appreciate and kind of surprised to receive this honor tonight. And actually, this is my 18 years in Milpitas Adult Education. So I'm really thankful for working with a wonderful teaching team and office staff every single workday that make my life different. And I'm happy to go to work every single day. And besides that, I'm really thankful to be chosen in this, working in this school district as raising my kid is my first career. So I start my second career, teaching career, at the age of 47. And then, you know, after 18 years, I am able to be a mature and seasoned adult educator. I'm really proud of myself, and this is so amazing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. And I'd also like to recognize Melanie Davis, our Principal Secretary. Melanie started with MUSD in 2008, and she started at our programs at correction. She has done several different positions. And as a Principal Secretary, I think she handles very, very well all the dynamics of our school. And she brings a lot of joy and also a lot of strategic planning that she makes it happen. Whenever you see her in the community, she will the first advocate for adult ed. And Melanie, congratulations, and thank you for everything that you do for our school.
And next is the MUSD State of the District, the last one for the year, I think. This last few days have been really exciting and also grounding, because seeing our learners who have accomplished all that they need to in order to graduate is one of the pinnacles of why we do what we do. And this is a photo of some of our graduates from our post-secondary program, along with Mr. Sorenson. And this is also Mr. Sorenson's last year, as he is moving on to the next path in his And for our average daily attendance, we finished the year at 95.17%, which is down .14 from the last time I reported. Our total enrollment is 10,301 today, which is down by about eight. And overall, you see that we still finished almost 200 students more than we started with in August. This is a photo of one of our groups of ESL learners who are celebrating their accomplishment this year in completing, I think this one was ESL four? Promotional, thank you. And then here, celebrations and success, we have on the left our Russell Middle School students who promoted yesterday, and on the right, we have some of our Rancho educators high-fiving our Rancho Milpitas Dons as they completed their promotion today. And at Calaveras Hills High School, where we had the inaugural class that celebrated for the first time in I don't know how long, probably 30 years, the first time that they got to celebrate graduation on their own campus. They did not have to go to the sports field. And we have here our Principal Payne and also Counselor Lombard. Another super exciting accomplishment is that the Randall Australias, Australia's? I think I said it better the second time. Our Randall Australias have, as all of our schools do, they have stretch goals that they're working on with their learners, with the students. And their goal for the end of the year was that all of their students of Latinx heritage would meet their stretch goals by 38%. And they finished beyond that, at 49% of all of their students of Latinx ancestry accomplished their stretch goals. So that's super amazing, very excited for our Randall World Languages team. And now we move on to the next segment of our agenda, which is our Executive Cabinet And we will begin with Chief Business Officer, Dorothy Reconoce.
The Governor's enacted budget will be available in July. Even though there's no board meeting in July, we will give you an update through our Superintendent Weekend Report. Our staff is working on closing the books and also going through the annual auditing process. And just a reminder, on June 18, our architect QKA, along with Black Construction, will host the Lunch and Learn Session for district office staff. This event will offer an exclusive preview of the exciting plans for Phase 3 construction and provide an opportunity for staff to ask questions, engage directly with the project team. We are once again getting four MHS student interns from the City of Milpitas Program, Milpitas Youth Force, or MYF. The city is hosting meet and greet with students and participating organization this Friday. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. And then we'll go on to our Executive Director of Learning and Innovation, Preeti Jharri.
Thank you. So Learning and Development has two reports tonight, so I'll just take a moment right now on behalf of Learning and Development to congratulate all of our graduates from Milpitas Middle College, Calaveras Hills High School, and Milpitas High School. We're very excited for what's ahead of you and proud of your accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. And our Assistant Superintendent of Human Relations, Damon James.
I'll add to the congratulations. Adult Education, Thomas Russell Middle School promoters, and Rancho Milpitas Middle School promoters, as well as all the sixth graders who will be transitioning to middle school. As far as HR is concerned, our mission and project during the summertime is to fill positions. So we'll be busily working to make that happen with the rest of our administrative staff.
Thank you. And now I would like to ask our Principal of Milpitas Adult Ed and Coordinator of Milpitas Adult Ed, Principal Brahim, and Coordinator Antonio Fuentes. And Ms. Lau.
However, we have so much, so little time to present everything that we would like to do. So hopefully throughout the year, we have more opportunities to just sit down and connect and talk and bring the community together. Joining me today is Antonio Fuentes, our Coordinator for Adult Education at the two sites, Ms. Lisa Lau, who's our ESL Program Specialist, and Ms. Nitya Ramanan, who is our CTE Program Specialist. For our report tonight, we want to focus on two strategic goals for Milpitas and adult education. The first one is building a culture of "we" that engages parents, staff, and community. And the second one is develop educational pathways that allow to apply the passion for learning for future careers. We would like to also, next slide, please, thank you, Scott. So within student success, strategic goal number one, we want to let you know that this year we have made tremendous strides, and we have at the two sites have 69 graduates that have completed their high school diploma. And you will see many of them at their graduation this coming Thursday. Also, we embarked in a campaign with the California Department of Education that was called Minding the Gaps. And Minding the Gaps brought all the adult schools to see what is going on with our students and how can we make the outcomes better for them. And in that case, we had several different strategies, and we were able to raise our payment points for the, for the both sides, but at the same time, the outcome of the perseverance and dedication of the students showed up. In the next slide, you will see our student of the, of the year, Wilmar Martinez, briefly, with a very inspiring message. a very inspiring message.
You gotta give me a minute. I gotta reboot it.
Thank you. Well, Scott helps us with the video. You can see in that slide, too, that we are also honoring our students at Corrections. And again, this year we have had a tremendous success in bringing up the numbers of the students who have completed their high school diploma. I'd like to bring up our coordinator, Antonio Fuentes, and also Ms. Nitya Ramanan, to talk about the paraprofessional program, which is not new to any of you, but it has a different purpose this time and a different twist that is also building the capacity. And we hope for our district as well.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Jordan, and staff. What we'd like to really speak on is the Pathways Program that we have. It takes partnerships to make pathways happen. And one of the greatest partnerships that we have at MUSD is one with the City of Milpitas. And one of that partnership has led us to develop one of these paraprofessional pathways in which we've had a success this year that I'd like to have Nitya really speak to what that success has been this year in our work.
So this year, we had a partnership with the City of Milpitas, and we got a grant to run two cohorts of the paraprofessional pathway, which would serve, of course, the immediate need for parents in the district. So we started off with, you know, the first cohort earlier this year, and we had, and the goals were to enroll forty students across both cohorts. This year, the first cohort, we were able to have a good number, which was sixteen people graduate. All of them were able to take the PARAPRO test, which is an ETS standardized test, and they did pretty well in that. They were also able to successfully complete the program. Also, as part of the program, five students were offered an internship with the CDC, with the Milpitas Sunny Hills CDC, which they will be beginning next week on the sixteenth of June. So that is great success, and we hope that we can do better in the next cohort, which will be in the fall of 2025.
To transition over, another one of our pathways that we have is our ELL Healthcare. And I would like to bring Lisa Lau up to speak to what has been our success.
Okay, we received the grant from ours consortium for the ELL Healthcare Pathway Grant to start this program. And also, the main course for this is like, we would like to, since the healthcare workers in demand, so we would like to encourage our new immigrants and, you know, to get into the healthcare sector. So that's why this course majors, the major purpose for this course is prepare the potential health workers to increase their language proficiency, and then also prepare the workforce readiness to get into the, to build a new career in healthcare career. And besides that, since a lot of our students in our school are highly educated in their home country, right now, this is just the language issue that bring down, you know, being unemployed or underemployed. For this reason, so we would like to, you know, go through this course to introduce them about the healthcare work environment and all kind of language necessary to fit into this environment to let them know about, you know, giving them their chance to really, you know, think about build a new career in healthcare. So that's it. And we finished two cohorts, and the completion rate is amazing. And the first cohort, we got eighty percent complete completion rate. And the second cohort, we got ninety percent completion rate. So is, I'm really happy for the student. And then I'm really, you know, thankful to have this grant to be able to offer this course to our community.
And I want to commend the partnership and collaboration between Nitya and Lisa because Nitya brought the CTE component to boost up the ELL component for the ELL Healthcare Pathway. And I think we are ready to listen and watch the short video, Wilmer Martinez, our student succeeding for twenty-four, twenty-five.
My name is Wilmer. I was born in Colombia. I'm only twenty years old. And then I've been coming to the school since 2022. And I will just tell one thing, guys, you definitely have to come here. It's the best experience that you can have. And then we'll help you in so many different ways. And when you get the point that you can talk with somebody else in English, the feeling right here inside of you is such an amazing thing. You can't describe that. Yeah.
If you get to ever meet Wilmer, he's all full of joy and hope. And he's a great student. And you can also see Guillermo. He's having his graduation at our correctional facility. And hopefully, many of our students that are still just as involved can come out and re-enter properly into the community. And looking at the future for career pathways?
So looking into the future of our career pathway, we want to continue our partnerships in the community. One of the partnerships that we want to continue the Office Assistant Paraprofessional, but in addition, our partnership with SEMI. SEMI is in the semiconductor industry. And we're looking to pilot a project in this upcoming fall and to see the opportunities of how we can develop a pathway where we can have career transitions, but taking some of our students that have the skill set, that have built their hard skill set, and they just need the opportunity to improve in their language, but also to be able to apply that in the semiconductor industry. So that is an area that we intend to have in the fall, a pilot program that we intend to grow into a bigger program and pathway that we hope to present here to the board in the near future. So with that.
And with that, I'm sure we're more than three minutes past, but I wanted to really share something that our visiting committee chair said at the end of her last visit. She said, "What truly sets the school apart is its cohesive and caring staff, classified and certified team members, work with a shared sense of purpose, always putting students first, and stepping into, and stepping in to support one another." Thank you very much, Board and Superintendent Jordan, for all the support you've always given to adult ed. Thank you.
Hold on. Are there any questions by the board?
When you talk about the semiconductor industry, what kind of projects are you looking at to pilot?
So we are working with SEMI to identify opportunities where we can develop as internships, where they can be on-the-job training. Those are, at this point, they're looking at more on the engineering side in semiconductor. But again, we have the demand of students that have a skill set, they have the hard skill set. It's just language. And as they're acquiring the language, we want to develop those connections where they can apply what they know and be able to enter the field. So we're working with SEMI. It is a partnership that we intend to pilot in this upcoming year. And from there, we'll see what our successes are to move forward and be able to scale the program.
Thank you. Forward to it. Thank you.
I'm excited to hear about the grant, as I hadn't heard about the grant before, for the EL learners and healthcare. Can you, is that an ongoing grant?
Yes, we are on round two. And the disbursement comes from the Chancellor's office in the Community College as a consortium. Four of our schools in the consortium are receiving the grant. And round one was for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the first year. In the second year, we have also been approved, but we do not know the amount yet. However, it's not going to be less than the first one. And talking about grants, as Superintendent Jordan and others know, this might be the first time in many, many years that our school has gone out to bring different type of funding sources to booster our program, and most importantly, to serve our students.
Any other comments from the board, Executive Cabinet? So a couple of things. One, a number of our parents in our school district are the individuals that you talked about that have the technical skills but may not have the language skills. When we met, Superintendent Jordan and I met with someone from Flex, they talked about the language requirement, the technical language requirement for English language learners in order to be considered for positions because they have companies all over the world, and they have these international language requirements on the technical side. Are you aware of those?
Yes, we are. And I think if I well recall, we kind of had also that conversation. And the standards that are required for industry are very different from the standards that are required from the CDC, from the CDE, which is the California, of course, Department of Education. So at our school, we want to always focus on the California Department of Education English standards. But at the same time, as we enter and open into more fields, we want to also make sure that we're recognizing industry, recognize specific industry standards of ESL.
So are you saying that that would be in addition, what I'm referring to would be an additional language program that aligns with what Mr. Fuentes is referring to for possibly our adult learners being able to work for SEMI in the engineering department?
So the last time that we met with the representative of SEMI, which was a couple weeks ago, we did say that our interest would be to focus on the need of the language piece that our students could bring to enter into that field. So with the team here, all of them, we are identifying the platforms that we can to present to SEMI next week and present a proposal where five or six students could enter into that program and get those language skills ready for some prospective internships.
And there was also the conversation that sparked interest from another advanced manufacturing organization when it came to the Six Sigma. Can you talk a little bit about that as well?
At Six Sigma, we received a grant, I believe, two years ago, and we were able to do three cohorts, of which six students passed the test. And many of them went back to their countries, and it has been hard to follow up on them. But it is something that we are also considering to bring back. As when we talked with Barton from SEMI, he also wanted to know a little bit more about the Six Sigma project that we did a couple of years ago.
I just want to continue to remind us that education is not the end goal. A person passing a class is not, does not make, provides them the opportunity for additional economic mobility. But adult education is that hidden gem, which obviously, across the country, they're not aware of because there are conversations around budget cuts to adult education. So what I would remind us to consider is that how are we bringing in programs that may at some point potentially become fee-based programs? There's a number of industries out there that, there are a number of organizations that provide professional development to adults in very similar settings to the Milpitas, very similar settings to the adult education that we are not tapping into. And we have a very vibrant, technically savvy community, as well as in our surrounding areas that should be considered. In addition, we're aware that at our, in our secondary, that we're talking about pathways. It's not, again, it's not just high school graduation. We're talking to kids about pathways so that their parents, as well as the students, are considering as well. And I would hope that we are in communication with the Director of Secondary, the Principal of the High School, as well as LND on the same topic. Could you talk a little bit about that?
So Priti and I are looking at each other.
Well, that's a start.
So what I wanted also to share is that this year, when we are working very closely with the CDE and minding the gaps and creating a lot of the important programs for our community, they have reminded us one more time that before we start building programs or offerings, we need to see who is the employer at the end of the road, at the end of the program, at the completion of the certificate. And many schools, including us, have had a hard time looking for the local employers. But again, with this minding the gaps, we have gone out and identified those who are able to support our learners in internships and on-the-job training, and from there, start building up the programs. So I think we are working very, very closely. And also, I want to highlight this year, the collaboration that we have had with Calaveras High School. We have many of their students transitioning to us, but with very, very specific goals of wanting to enter college right away and also to the workforce. So to that point, Nova Youth and Nova Works have been very, very present at the site. It is a few number of students that they are attracting. However, that interaction with the students, both from Nova Youth, are enabling the students to get the resources that they need to get also the wraparound services for navigation along with our transition specialists. So I think we have a future better plan in not only the completion of a class or a certificate.
Thank you. And I think in the fall, we can perhaps do a more in-depth board report and bring the whole team so we can talk through the job placement aspect that Ms. Holm, our International Specialist, does. And then also, you can share more about the relationships and the actions that you're developing through the summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Norwood, there is an action item. It's adopting the tech plan.
Yep.
And we have our Advisory Task Force members, some of which are students. So if there's a place that we can move it up on the board.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to move the tech plan. That is action item C...
D three.
D three to, after board communication requests. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, so we had, Scott, did you get that, the motion and second?
No, I did not. Great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion by VP Ipchuan and a second by Board Trustee Dr. Nakka. And Rob was almost in there, but he didn't quite, or maybe he might have been in there, but, you know, we got there. Okay. So we've got that movement going.
It's okay.
We've done the Executive Cabinet Report. Our student board members have graduated. So let's give them a big round of applause for their effort. Super proud that since 2018, Milpitas Unified School District has student board member reps. We started with one, and now we have three, one from Milpitas High School, one from Calaveras Hills High School, and one from the Middle College High School. And they always provide insightful comments. This past year, they learned how to make a motion. They also participated in the vote. And then when it was pertinent, they were able to ask questions of Executive Cabinet, the Superintendent, as well as the presenters of the reports. We look forward to starting the 2025, 2026 school year and having student board members actively involved once again. For the second time, we're going to bypass board group agreements and go straight to board communication requests, starting with Trustee No.
Thank you, Board President Norwood. I just have one request tonight for Superintendent Jordan that I... that at a future board meeting, if we could hear about inclusive practices for Milpitas Elementary Olympics. I know we had a successful run this past year, but I would love to hear what we can iterate and improve on with inclusive practices.
Sure.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
That's exciting about inclusion for the Elementary Olympics. If Mary Jude was here, she'd smile. Thank you for that. Dr. Nakka.
I would like to congratulate all the graduates and the students who have been working hard and the educators who have been the backbone and support system in our district. And of course, the classified and every educator, every staff member of our Milpitas Unified School District from the bottom of my heart for making a change and impact in our students' lives. So thank you. And that's pretty much. Thank you, President.
Thank you. For Clerk John.
So I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments on everyone's whole community's work on getting everyone graduated. So without further comment, I will forsake the rest of my time.
Thank you. Clerk John, VP Yip Chuan.
Yep, same here. Congratulations to all the high school, middle school, sixth grade promotions. Even my own daughter graduated from Russell. So I just want to thank everyone and it's been a great year. With that, I pass it on to you.
Thank you. And I'll put a bow on the comments of my colleagues by adding the educators, the administrators, the classified team, all of the folks that led the way in supporting the students getting to graduation and making it through the entire school year. I think you said we had 95% attendance rate?
Yes.
95% attendance rate is nothing to sneeze at. And that's a large part due to trusted adults being into these children's lives and them wanting to come to school every day. Because again, we've recognized post-COVID that some parents were hesitant in terms of bringing, sending their kids back to school all the time, no matter what the circumstances were. But we continue to trend upward, going back for that 97% goal that we had pre-COVID. And that is a large due to the caring adults that are in their lives across the district. So we thank you all for your service and leadership in terms of getting us through another school year. Now moving on to item reports, but we decided that we were going to move the tech plan presentation up to this point. So we, the next item on the agenda is the tech plan.
And this is an action item.
And this is an action item. Thank you for the reminder. And we don't have those T-shirts. No, they are awesome.
On the size medium.
Not the backside too. Look at that.
And the sleeve I saw.
And the sleeve?
Scott, if we can get the slide out there. Good evening, you guys. As you can tell, I have a big part of the village behind me. My name is Chen Song. I'm the Director of Technology here in Milpitas Unified. It's my 14th year here and the crazy thing is, is I yesterday was observing my own son. You know, you guys shook his hand as he was going through. That's when it starts to slowly but quickly dawn on you, right? It's not, just not you. It's just not your parenting, but it's the entire village. And for me, I'd like to actually personally thank my immediate village, our family of tech services. If you guys can stand up. Many of these folks, they have, they have literally like raised my two children, right, along with me. And it's a super heartfelt thanks, even down to the degree. The moment that I remember the most is when Mary right there, I was just rolling in with Vincent. And no matter what you say about this being YouTube forever, this needs to be on YouTube forever. Because I rolled in with Vincent at the age of one and I had a meeting and I just said, Mary, can you hold him? And just placed him right there. And he was like comfortable as ever. Hour and a half later, he was still resting on her shoulder. An hour and a half later. And he didn't wake up for another 30 minutes, right? And I just remember that just as clear as day. And it's amazing that Xavier now has finished eighth grade and is now looking forward to joining the Trojan Family Class of 2029 with Mr. Womack over there. So along with that, with the continued planning of our technology and how it might look for the future of our students, let's go on to the technology plan. So next, please. First, I want to take you through a journey, a quick journey, which I'd like for Superintendent Jordan to speak about as she was a a big part of it along with the rest of the team.
Thank you, Director Song. And thank you to our tech team and also to our AI task force. I see some of you out here. And our AI task force, as the board knows, was created at their request. And it's really been a joy, I have to say. We've met, I think we've met a total of six or seven times. And initially, we came together with a lot of different ideas about AI, in particular, even from one of our students expressing a concern that it would lead to cheating. And some of our parents concerned about privacy issues. However, Director Song came up with four tasks and the group assembled into four working groups. And they had homework. And so in between our meetings, they were getting to know each other either virtually or in person as they focused on their four areas, one of which was how would we use AI and tech to benefit all in our strategies for learning? The other was how would we use AI and tech in improving STEAM education and project-based learning? The other was how would we use AI and tech to benefit those who need accommodations? And the last was how do we assure equity and access for AI and tech use? And then from there, we came to revising the tech plan. And I will turn it back to you, Director Song.
Thank you so much. Impeccable memory on the four items. And so the, there was initially, because we wanted to include everyone, including the 40-plus members who participate in either the AI task force and/or the tech plan committee or both, for the most part. We wanted to include the greater community. So we sent out a series of surveys and we had 1,728 surveys back, mostly from secondary, which is huge, right? We've never gotten that many responses back. And quality responses back from students and 225 staff members, a third of them, and then 231 parents. Right? And so pretty good numbers and a good litmus test of like what we can work off of and how can we build this to kind of build the future for our students. But I could say a lot of things, but I'd like to bring up three people, two students and one staff member because they'd like to share their experience. So first, Arvind.
And then Ridwan.
Hi, everyone. My name is Arvind. I'm a freshman at the Milpitas High School. And I was thrilled, I'm thrilled to be part of the AI task force. So when, I thought this would be an incredible experience. So I joined, I applied and then a few days later, I got accepted. I was a little hesitant at the first meeting about what I was going to say, especially with all the technical talk. But with the familiar faces, I was able to find myself at home. So we got started with listing out all possible AIs that we could use. And it took longer than expected. I had to use the time that I could salvage every last minute before the next meeting. So the next meeting, we took out that list and chose the two, the top two or three AIs that we could use. And then from there, we went on to a technology plan, which involved a bit of AI. And from there, we, we managed to create a five-year plan and then reduced it to a three-year plan in the, in our last meeting. So overall, I thought it was like a pretty incredible experience. And my hope is that we can somehow finish the technology plan in like three years or a bit earlier. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ridwan Zamman and I'm a student currently enrolled at the Innovation Campus. So I joined the task force because, one, I'm interested in it. And second, it felt like my second home because I'm surrounded by people who are interested in the same topics in me and also will put in the effort to actually work on it. So my group was more specialized on implementing AI in PBL, so project-based learning. And we each individually in our WhatsApp group all came up with different ideas and posted them there. And by the next meeting, we sort of, we created a design to where we would be able to have like a sort of chatbot like ChatGPT to be specialized for each individual topic, like arts, math, English, engineering and even coding. So my experience was pretty, was really good this year. And I think that we will, we as a district will be able to implement this and it will boost us a lot.
Good evening, Superintendent Jordan, board members. My name is Vauri Surambhala. I have the pleasure to be part of this AI committee. But before that, I just want to thank you, Superintendent. I'm coming from Los Angeles. I worked for LA Unified for about 10 years. And I never had the opportunity to meet a superintendent. It's an honor. Thank you for promoting the we. You show me a different face of this district. And for me, it's an honor to be here. And as AI evolves, we also have to remind that we teach human beings. And we are human beings. Therefore, the invitation is to always keep in mind that technology can go very fast and farther. However, the hearts are going to be here and the heart of the human being can never be replaced by AI. It was an honor and a pleasure to be with all of you. Thank you.
All right. So you get to see some human faces, right, to whatever we're writing. And the impact going forward will be great. So next slide, please. So our thing, we're thinking about how do we impact? And the thought about what our technology plan should do is bring in some flexibility and forward-thinking along with what the technology can do with the human to elevate every learner, right? Simply that's all we want the technology to do. How do we elevate the human? How do we elevate the system? But most importantly, how do we elevate every learner? Next slide, please. And so in the previous decade, what we aimed to do, especially with blended learning, was to bring one-to-one access, the information closer to the student. And then the next phase is about human agency and augmentation with the tools that are available, especially with artificial intelligence. And so we go from the devices in hand and access to information to intelligence in context. Right? So everything will be contextual going forward. What am I learning? How do I bring the other pieces here? And then also from staff to student use, to student and staff plus the AI co-learning and co-producing. And what might that look like? But in order for us to do that, we must first provide the tools that are necessary for that to happen, right? So you have to build into pillars. Next slide, please. And so what does technology support? And then simply, it supports all the strategic goals that you have, as well as all the LCAP goals. Next slide, please. And internally, our goals are very simple. We want to have a hundred percent uptime and zero tickets. Nothing crazy, right? Talk about it all the time. Hundred percent uptime unless something happens. But we will take the blame regardless if the internet goes down. We'll take all the necessary actions to make sure that it comes up in a timely way, along with our partners and other people who might be involved in the process. And then also for the zero tickets, we strive every day, right, to go down the line to make sure that we're addressing issues immediately, if we can. If it requires some other outside entity, then we can wait for that, but we also try to expedite those as well. And we have everything on a statistical line. Next slide, please. In terms of staffing, this is what FICMAT recommends. That's the Fiscal Management Group. And they recommend for a size of our district, 29 people. But we right now have 14, right? And so that's the recommended level. This is what we're working with. But we try to optimize what we have and try to leverage the tools to maximize our existing resources. Next slide, please. In terms of stats-wise, we have 11,700 active users every single day on our system, sometimes more like today during graduation, during Milpitas High graduation, even more. And then in terms of Google Meet, there are 2,400 Google Meet that exceed 10 minutes or more. That's quite a bit. Right? A month. So that's virtual meetings where people didn't drive, right? People, folks are getting together. It could be as small as just two individuals getting together, or it could be over 100 getting together. Right? So just think about like that dynamic. Plus, there's 1.2 million Google chats sent monthly. It's a staggering number. And that's both for staff and students. And that's staff to students and students to staff. They're having conversations at various parts of the day, either to clarify, to get additional learning material, let out a frustration, talk amongst each other, right? This is the digital, digital city center per se. And then also, there are 1.8 million externally shared files on our system today with outside entities, not just within Milpitas Unified, but outside the system. Okay, next slide, please. So in our tech plan, we cover a variety of things. Top of the thing is budget, device and refresh, support, and eventually we'll go to a help desk one, a single help desk system for our staff. And then we cover some of the future of learning, professional development and heavily on AI and what that might look for our future. And so with that, with the next link is the technology plan. So if you can click into that, Scott. Okay, and scroll up. And this is our title page, right? And it simply says elevate every learner. And this is our table of contents going through what is in there. I'm not going to cover every single item, but I will highlight what is in there. So you can get a too-long-didn't-read version of this piece and please peruse this at your, at your leisure. And so there's an intro there on page three. But highlighted is their strategy remains flexible and forward-thinking, right? And so we want things to be very flexible and forward-thinking so that we can accommodate whatever technologies might be coming on. And once again, emphasizing elevating every learner.
Chen?
Yes.
Is this your best plan ever?
No, absolutely not. But it is the best plan to date.
So that means in, that's why you had mentioned earlier the flexible piece?
Yes.
Because technology is constantly evolving and moving?
Yes. And not only that, what happened was when we began the AI task force, some information wasn't available publicly or wasn't available to us at all. And so by the time we got into the tail end of the AI task force, there were more information available which required us to dramatically change our plans from a five-year plan to a three-year plan. And we think that too might be a little long. So then that's why we started putting in language for flexibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we covered some of the vision pieces and then going into goals and objectives. So if we were to distill this plan all down into one, it would be in the acronym NUSD. M being modern learning and innovation. U, universal access and inclusion. S for skilled students, staff, and safe systems. And D, deep partnerships and sustainable growth. Please go ahead and scroll down. And these were the folks that wanted to be identified as being participants. However, we did have some anonymous members who also participated, who did not wish their name to be publicized. However, we deeply thank them for their contributions and insights. Next, on the tech services team. So this lays out our team. And if you go to the structure, this is not a traditional org chart. This is our seating chart in our organization. As we, literally, it's not a top-down organization. We are a very much of a cross-functional, what happened, let's fix it, organization. So it doesn't matter whether it has to come through me. It can come through any one of our members and the first directive is to fix the issue. And then we can problem solve, talk about it, chat about it, critique it later. Let's go to the next section, technology survey. And so there are seventeen hundred and twenty-eight folks who participated, two hundred and twenty-five staff members and two hundred and thirty-one parents, right? This describes how the tech survey was done, what we, what we wanted to gain insights from. We asked a variety of questions. For example, for parents, it focused on communication and support. So we incorporated all these feedback elements to our technology plan. Next, alignment with educational standards and requirements. Because there's lots of requirements that we have to adhere to, especially the state and federal technology alignment. So we have aligned with that, our, our state standards and as well as the well-known frameworks for ISTI and Future Ready. And also going down, thinking about the curriculum, the computer science for all, right? So that is, that is all explained there. And then the next section, along with that, now computer science for all has an expanded definition which has AI for all, right? And so it's not a, it's not a separate section. It is all included within the computer science discipline. And there's lots of resources and things to read there and how we're thinking about that topic. Okay, next is our strategic initiatives and implementation strategies, going with access for all, right? The one-to-one device program for every student. And then from there, making sure that everyone has a high-speed connectivity, up to and including at the house. During COVID, we made sure and went to homes that did not have connection and made sure that they had connection, a high-speed connection that they can connect at home. If you take a look at the diagram right above there, there are some numbers. The MUSD network has fourteen MDFs, right? And so that's our main data closet with hundred and thirteen intermediate data closets with thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two ports all along throughout the district, eight hundred and ten access points, and hundred and forty-four cameras, the eye in the sky, right, per se. And so all that is within the framework of the network. Of course, if we were to put in additional details, it could go on for another fifty pages. However, this is a concise version of our network. And then on next page, it's our strategic initiatives, right? Implementation strategies.
Chin, talk about the access points for a second.
Sure.
Access points across the city connected to the, from the school sites. There, is there a approximate number that you have of access points per school site? Or is it per population of the community? How did you come up with that?
Oh, so eight hundred and ten access points is densely covering hundred percent of the indoor spaces and mostly ninety percent of our outdoor spaces, any of the learning spaces within Milpitas School Grounds.
Okay.
And then along with that, as a public service, we open up our guest network. We do not restrict that because folks can just come to a parking spot near you and then jump on our guest network because we understand that sometimes you may not always have access everywhere.
And we have seen that out here at Randall.
Yes, sir.
In some nights after late board, some board meetings, folks sitting right out there, kind of doing their day.
Milpitas High School, Palmeroy, and Matos as well.
Thank you.
Chin?
Yes?
In regards to the number of access points outside of the, of our spaces, like, you know, at, at folks' homes, do we still have a lot of those?
Oh, we have approximately hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten, okay. Okay. And, and those?
And those are hotspots.
Yeah, those are hotspots, right. Okay, that's what I wanted. Okay, perfect, thanks.
Did you support, did you support the Eastside Access Program? You know, Eastside did a deal with the City of San Jose, Southern Public Library, City Council to provide access to these communities that were surrounding the schools and stuff like that.
Yes.
Did you work with them on that?
So they have a program with Rancho. And so because of some of the access or because that's a third-party program
Yep.
that we could not jack into, they actually distribute that within, within Rancho's families.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep. Okay, next is some of the immersive and interactive classrooms and facilities. Because this particular piece is more of an aspiration in terms of what our classrooms could look like. However, in some of our classrooms, they do have 3D glasses, right? So they have the MetaQuest glasses where they can actually jump in immersibly. Augmented reality, we do have thirty-four units of augmented computers that students can actually use to do various science experiments. But those are not like widely deployed in our district. And then the other piece on the bottom is the emergency communications technology, which next year we will start debuting, where each display device will also be an emergency display device. And that's just simply putting a communication box that allows us to wirelessly connect via HDMI and we are able to push in emergency notifications at will. All right, the other, if you scroll down to page fifteen, going down to innovative learning tools and curriculum integration. We're looking at different pieces around digital content and curriculum. So every time there is a available piece of learning that could happen digitally, we should explore that if it is a high-quality content. And how does that mix in with our existing, existing learning materials? And then also thinking about universal design for learning so that most students, or if not all students, have access to that high-quality content. As well as thinking about AI in education, right? Because oftentimes, the first trigger thing is AI in education. It is some sort of students must be cheating, yet we use it ourselves. But we also must now recognize that AI is basically the ocean and our students are on the boat on it, right? And so we cannot avoid the fact that it's being used out in industry. It's being used by our teachers. And it's also being used every day with our students, all day long. Yet, the conversation cannot just be these courageous conversations on whether AI is going to come, whether it's going to be challenging. But the conversation needs to be in a form like the Titanic going into the iceberg. However, this time, the iceberg is not AI, right? It's not gonna change its course. The AI is the ocean, right? We're immersed in it. And so we must work within the context of the technology and how we might benefit going forward and how we're going to leverage the technology to elevate every learner.
Chin, quick question.
Yes.
Have a couple, actually. Do we have any statewide grants to support the classrooms in terms of AI, like the evolving technology?
Nothing solid that we have today. So that's something that you can work with, right?
The community partners, probably?
Yes.
Locally? And the second question is like, do we have any training resources from Raft for our teachers to keep up with?
With?
The training resources for our teachers, like the professional development?
Yes, so we're, we're actually not just Raft, but there's tons of AI resources available. And then over the summer, we'll be releasing some professional development and learning resources. And we aim to expand, expand that conversation. And we've already started creating a resource both for teachers as well as administrators to, to make sure that that component gets weaved into learning.
Thank you.
And for next year's conversation.
Thank you, Chin.
Yes.
Chin, a quick question on the classroom type of learning. Are we able to leverage any of the classes that are already developed? Let's say history lessons or, or stuff where we are using the 3D glasses and, and, you know, depending on what platforms you can use or what platforms you have, you know, have more immersive experiences for kids to learn, let's say, a subject like history?
Yeah, so there are software that's available. As a matter of fact, we've explored creating independent spaces that is so immersed, it's like movie-like. However, each of those classroom, classroom restructuring for about nine hundred square feet would cost one point two million dollars. And then the throughput that we would have, we'd have to dedicate a personnel and the expenses we estimate at this time will outpace the benefits that we might have.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, and then we go on, talking about the immersive learning with AR/VR, just as what Rob mentioned, and then also robotics and coding programs, as well as our existing STEAM programs that we have and how we might be able to bolster that piece. Also, we included some plans for early childhood and adult education here as well and thinking about them in the early CDC and TK ages and what we might be able to bring to them. And so there are some reading programs, amazing reading programs that allows students to elevate their reading now in multiple languages, thanks to some advances in AI, right? So we'll be able to ratchet up some of those initiatives in the next couple of months and years. And then some specialized plans for early child, for adult education. For adult learners and as well as our English learners, what'll be amazing is the on-live in, just-in-time translation. So as I'm speaking to you in English, on the other side, it'll instantly translate into currently a handful of languages. However, it'll expand to over fifty-plus languages. So it'll show a subtext as well as hearing in their native language. Now, the critique is, it's not perfect. And we don't expect it to, especially with some of the slang that's available. So it may not come through all the way, but I'll tell you as an English learner who came to this country, eight and a half, speaking no English, that some translation is better than no translation. And if it gets relatively close, it'll be amazing. I always reflect back to, because I came here in third grade, speaking no English, right? And then still, eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, I still struggled. And so remembering what that felt like, I always think about like, what can we do to help those learners who may be struggling, right? And then my cousins who did not succeed because they did not understand the language, not because they had an intellectual, intellectual disability of any kind. They just simply didn't understand the language and they ended up not graduating, right? Different trajectory in life. All right, let's go down for the sake of time to page twenty-one, digital equity, accessibility, and inclusion. So it's just not about one-to-one devices, right? So how do we get even closer to that goal by using like digital literacy and mentoring? And then thinking about the accessible technology and content. We have a staff member here, Benke, who is deaf. She is using a digital translating device that goes from audio to text, right? And so we inherently work with a person who may require assistance and think about those issues and how we might be able to extend that to others, right? Just by simply having a closed captioning system helps tremendously. All right, let's go down to twenty-three. So when we're thinking about different spaces, we also think about the experiences within those spaces. A well-run space, you don't even know that you're walking into a well-run space. It just simply works, right? You opened up your laptops today, just magically connected onto the network. If it doesn't work, you notice it immediately. If it works, you're like, eh, that's how it's supposed to be, right? And so what does that experience look like for our classrooms? A standardized way of this is what it should look like? These are the resources that we can guarantee so that you can get to your elevated learning, right? And our shared spaces, whether it's a meeting space, whether it's an auditorium, what does that particular space look like? And what services do we have that when a person walks in, that we guarantee certain level of service there as well? And then, let's go down to cybersecurity, page twenty-five. So there are some baseline security measures. We stated in year one, we will have multi-factor authentication. Today, thanks to our new manager, Anne Pham, we are at ninety-nine percent of two-factor authentication. That's, thank you guys for keeping our district safer. For those of you who are listening out loud in cyberspace, that's not a challenge. Certainly not a challenge. But thank you for, for getting us ahead of the game.
Good job, Board. Good job, Board. Hundred percent, two-factor authentication right here.
Yes, sir. You guys were one of the first. Okay, and then we will do additional cyber training and awareness and then build out a more robust incident response plan. It's almost like firefighting plans. It's not that we, we will ever encounter, we hope never to encounter. Otherwise, Dorothy will not be happy because the funds will have to go elsewhere. So we will put a response plan together. This is what might happen if these things occur. And then going on page twenty-six, we talk about student data privacy and then how we build our system with resilience and continuity. And then tech support model. We aim to have a tier zero, one, and two tech support model. And starting mid-next year, think about putting in a student tech leadership program so that they become part of the process. They learn as well as they can be part of some of the solutions if they talk about some challenges that they might have with tech. And we talk about our maintenance and refresh cycles, what we do for sustainability. And then on the next page, on twenty-eight, we are for this year implementing a Chromebook purchase. And then on the next page, on 28, we are for this year implementing a Chromebook purchase by our, by our students. We already had a, in the last couple of days, many students purchased their Chromebooks on the way out. And so this way, it continues their learning if they don't have one, and then if they need a spare for whatever reason, they have that as well. But on our side, it reduces e-waste, and then we still have plenty to cycle back into the classroom and to our younger grades, to lower grades. Okay. And then going down to strategic partnerships and collaborators on 29, we talk about our higher education partners, industry and tech companies, and nonprofits and networks, community and families, and early childhood organizations. And so on page 31, we have the key milestones, what we aim to accomplish in 25, 26, year one, this, this coming year, through year 27 and 28. And then budget considerations, or on page 32, these are all fairly fixed infrastructure and hardware piece that we have cycling through every five years to a decade. And then student device insurance that we will start to self-insure, and then software and content licenses, and partnerships, and other grant opportunities that we might have. And then there's lots of additional costs for you to consider. If you want to get the details of these funds, you can go ahead and take a look at our detailed budgets. And then on page 34, we outline the funding streams and grant opportunities that we have And then in conclusion, on page 37, if you look at the bold, we will create an environment where every student can excel and every student can innovate, and every staff can innovate, okay? And we want them to be confident creators, whether they're doing it without the help of technology or with the help of technology, right? Because inspiration can pop up by observation of others, or observation would perhaps a prompt that you put in, that you saw, you're like, I could perhaps do it even better. Tell me more. What do you think about this? And what it actually ultimately means is empowering each learner to achieve their full and fullest potential. So this is our technology plan for the next three years. We ask for your support, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I have one.
Sure.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for that overview of the plan. I like your new MUSD acronym. That was pretty clever. And I love how much you and the tech team, like you dig into the instructional tools. You, you think so thoroughly about that, so it's a lot of fun to collaborate. The one piece that I'm wondering about that I didn't hear like explicitly covered is, like, we've been talking a lot about, like, how do we get a comprehensive system that can provide us a full picture of our students, right? Both the academic data, the social emotional data, the interventions, so that we can also elevate like our MTSS, SST systems, get out of CSACE. Where does that live here, like, when we think about the tools adults in our system also need?
Yeah, so the number one key to getting great data out, or actually even having a dashboard, is to have quality data in. So before thinking about just some advanced tools to do that, I would think about getting the quality data into our system first. And when I say that, perhaps our existing data systems to capture that information.
So we've been doing that, right, for the last couple of years, but I think it's, it's just not in a space that I think elevates to all the other spaces that I think this tech plan does. So I would just say, I think it needs, we're at a place where we have some of the data. It could continue to grow, but we also need a system that's going to help us to look at it in a timely way and in a robust way so that we can continue to accelerate our personalized approaches to students. Thanks.
Thanks.
Quick question, and somewhat on those lines is, you know, the value or one piece of the value of the AI question is, you know, helping each of our teachers to be more productive. Where do you see that fit into the overall plan? Is that something where we have apps that we teach them how to use, or, you know, they can develop their own apps, or, give me, give me your view of that?
So that's going to slowly start to come in, but it's going to be much faster than expected, right? So for example, you already see that when you do a simple Google search, right? It's already giving you some packaged information. If you take a look at your Gmail, it's already doing that piece, where it's either nudging you, or it's putting them into categories without your intervention. And then, so what will happen slowly but fast will be the agentic AI, right? The agents will come in into different tools that we might have. Our education partners tend to lag behind slower, but if we take a look at their adoption cycle of these various texts, it is much quicker than it is today. So even for tools like iReady, they're already putting in some AI back in to, to show perhaps a data in a better way.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to caution the board, in, in our understanding, we recognize how hard our teachers work and how much time they put in, so asking how they can become more productive is, is somewhat assuming that they're not as productive as they can possibly be already. If, if that's not the context that you meant, then I would ask that we clarify that, because we, we recognize, again, the amount of effort that they put in, we, we compliment, and we, we talk about us being at 95% in other things. So if, if maybe I can take the question and say, some of these things are aspirational in your plan. As, as you look at the implementation of your plan, if the board approves it, how, is there a, is there a component where you envision how it works with the association leaders? Or does the associations get presentations of this and then you get feedback from them as well for the execution on that?
Yes, on all that. So they will, we will work with them to make sure that it works, and then it works, and how we might be able to put that in. So next year is, is in going to, for example, Milpitas High, along with the associations, to think about how it might work in their specific departments in that specific context, right? And so how might these tools work? And with the, with your comments is absolutely correct, right? It's not about, there was a conversation around 18 months ago where these companies, they had these marketing materials, especially one with, you know, perhaps with all the times that teachers will save and be more productive, that they will be able to do even more work. And I'm like, you guys, totally the wrong message, right? Totally the wrong message, right? Having been a teacher, having, trying to optimize, right? If you've ever lived that teacher life where you're taking care of someone and you're trying to make dinner, and you're trying to do this while answering a phone call, while someone's at the door, right? While you have spaghetti on your graded papers, and you still have 67 more to go that night. People just misunderstand how much teachers actually put into their thought process of how can I perhaps do this better? So there's no external pressure, it's just in the proof of concept, this is how it might work, and how do you already do your process? And let's kind of rethink, can it be done a different way, right? And if they're open to that, and then we'll actually start to move forward.
Thank you.
So where would this tech plan live?
Online.
It will, it will live online as well as it's part of the educational master plan, which is the umbrella for all of our plans. Thank you. And that's what I wanted to understand from that standpoint, because depending on where it lives is how it's going to drive the plan, because a lot of work has gone into it from what I can see. The, the thing about AI adoption is how do we get to where we use it like electricity, where we just don't think about it, but we incorporate it every day? Not to get more efficient, but to really adopt to what the world is or will be. And through our graduations and promotions, we've heard a lot about elementary prepares students for middle school, middle school prepares students for high school, high school prepares you for a world that you don't know what to expect. And in that sense, AI is kind of that new world that they're not expecting, but we see our students already engaging and adopting in what we call prompts for AI. Not necessarily how to better utilize, but how to get to the questions that they can't get to a particular teacher, staff, parent, community member. It's there for them. And so what I see is a very comprehensive tech plan, very ambitious tech plan. I know that you had a section for funding. I don't know if we can get there from a funding perspective, as far as devices, one-to-one for every student. However, it's not about the uses of the device, it's about the understanding of what is available.
And to that, what was interesting was today in Miss Kim's class, we talked about, or she had a career day at the Innovation Campus today. And so one of the topics was around AI. And we did a raw search of AI and changing careers and so on and so forth. But I had to emphasize to the students that AI, though it will replace some roles, though it will augment some roles, AI will also enhance and also be, humans will be more valued in the process. When we talk about why to come to a physical public school, right? We also must think about what is the competitive, competitive advantage of a physical school? And it's because it's the human social connection that is constantly present, right? It is the relationship between the instructor, or the teacher, or the guide, or the mentor, the adult, and the student, right? That human connection is what makes physical schools very different than just an online school, a master class, right? Or a document. And that's why this is more of a living plan, not a fixed plan, because we might get some information a couple of weeks from now, and like, scratch that, doing this.
Thank you for that. And that was kind of like my, circling back to my first question about, was this your best plan? And I was looking for you to talk about this being a living document. You mentioned flexible, and you mentioned living as well, so I appreciate that. And I want to be mindful of your team and your time, so I want to look to the left of me, to the executive cabinet, to see if you have any additional comments, and then we'll come back to the board for their final comments.
I would just like to say thank you for the way that you looked to create collaboration in the tech plan. And first, as we set up the AI task force and really provided opportunity to explore first our preconceived notions and then our educated notions on, and views on how that changed, and then how you wove that into the context for the tech plan and the update, and then how you gave access to co-creating it through editing and going through a couple editing sessions, and then we brought in the executive cabinet for one of those, and it was, I think, a great strategy that you employed in order to have as many people a part of it as possible.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me join.
Yeah, Chin, I appreciate the presentation. I was just trying to look through here, you know, for this five-year renewal. I was just curious, is there like an estimated cost? And, you know, since we were talking about budget earlier, I was just wondering, like, was it part of Dorothy's projected budget for the next three years?
So those, those projections have relatively not changed since 2012. So we've had this plan of a four-to-five-year refresh, as well as a student refresh since 2012. You can go back in, in time and kind of see how that panned out. Once we reached a student critical level of 10,000 devices, we were to, we were to refresh a quarter of their units every single year. Now, there's some, there's some strategies to reduce the cost, and we've employed one of those this year, which is taking some of the existing cycle and then putting it back into the, into some of the lower grades so that they can continue to benefit while decreasing costs.
So, so what was the, the number, like the estimated cost for the five years?
So for the adult devices, they range anywhere from 250,000 to now about 350,000 because of the cost going up. And then for student devices, 1.25 million dollars every year.
Every year.
And thus far, we've paid a chunk of it with our bond funds.
Correct. Redevelopment.
With the most current purchase.
Back in.
We are using our building fund. It's for just less than a million dollars.
Thank you.
So this year, we're able to bring that down to sub-million this year going forward in 20, 25, 26.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from board members? Is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt by?
Wait, wait, wait.
There was one more comment.
Thank you.
I think I'll connect one-on-one about the, I can see there is a 508 compliant, and probably, you know, I would like to understand more about any robbers, guardrails, and LLMs that we are trying to offer for our education. I think in the interest of time, probably, I'll connect with you later, Chin.
Appreciate that.
And I would love that shirt, unless it is only for your team.
You have to go through a certain level of, of suffering.
I appreciate that. Appreciate that.
To earn the shirt, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion?
We already, I'm sorry, we already had a motion by trustee Jung, and then who had the second?
Second.
All right, we have the second by Dr. Nakka. Any additional discussion? Any public comments?
We have no hands raised at this time.
With no public comments, discussion concluded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries. Congratulations, tech team.
Good job.
Item 20A, Learning and Development MUSD Community Design Team Report.
Okay, I would like to invite the community design team up.
Scott, if you'll pull up our slide deck?
So while we're waiting for the slide deck, I'll just introduce myself and the team. We are a very large team, but as you know, there's a lot of events happening in Milpitas this week, so some of our parents are celebrating with their kids. But I am Parithi Jahari, the Executive Director of Learning and Innovation, and I'm here tonight with?
I'm Elaine Silvera, and I have a kid who just graduated or was promoted last night and is on his way to MHF. Can I say one thing? Everyone earlier acknowledged the administrators and the kids and the community for what they do, but I want to thank all of you for keeping the gears greased and making this such a great district. And it was a great promotion ceremony, so thank you.
My name's Tanya Shahid.
Hi, my name is Nikukthay. I'm a current, well, incoming senior at Milpitas Middle College High.
I'm Sadhi Kim. I'm an English teacher at the Milpitas High School Extension at the Innovation Campus.
Okay, so our team came together as part of our commitment to reimagining educational pathways, specifically at the secondary level. We were, we've been working
We were, we've been working as a team, as a district on Calaveras Hills High School, Middle, Milpitas Middle College, MHS and the MHS Innovation Extension. So we wanted to focus our processes, our, our design process, not just as doing to, but doing with our community. So the purpose of this committee was really about deep listening and pulling in our parents and our students, not just as participants, but as co-designers. On the next slide, you'll see the host of people that joined us. When I first reached out to the group to join us, there was skepticism of like, wait, another committee, Priti? I'm already on the LCAP committee. But people, people came with skepticism. And then what you'll see and hear through the journey of our work is that we actually built a lot of trust. And we moved from feeling isolated in the work to really feeling connected. So we're going to talk you through our process, which included empathy interviews, root cause analysis, and share not only what we've learned, but where we're headed.
Okay. For the empathy interviews, I also thought this was going to be a checkoff. One more thing that we do, some surveys, that sort of thing. But I was pleasantly surprised that it exceeded every expectation, especially with the interviews, because I think those truly exemplify what community engagement is all about. We didn't have a survey. We actually had live conversations. We, amongst our team, had 70 interviews that were conducted. And we had a live student forum as well from some students from Cal Hills, which was extremely enlightening. From my perspective, the people who I interviewed, I tried to make it an interview with people I didn't know much about. So I had two parents who were from special ed. And I also interviewed my own son, thinking he wasn't going to give me any surprises, and he did. So we had five questions. The first one was, what do you like about living in Milpitas and what do you not like? It was an awesome way as an icebreaker because everyone had some stories. But there was a common thread in it. Number one, on the like side, was the diversity in our community. Every single person mentioned it. The other part of that, the not-so-good, was the smells during the summer from the dumps and the sanitation plant. So beyond that was a question, what time can you describe that you felt belonging in school, in MUSD? And for my son, I was surprised because he mentioned what men had talked about earlier, which was the Milpitas Olympics, Elementary Olympics. And he said how honored he was to be a part of it and to be chosen and how much fun it was. And he really felt part of a bigger thing. And I said, really? How did your friends feel about it? And so he started telling me stories about them. A couple of them even explained how they felt to me. When I brought this back to our team, someone said, but your son is an athlete. What about the people who weren't included? Which is to your point. And so to me, that was a big bright spot in all of this. We actually got to talk about it. And we also forged relationships because with the people I spoke to, when I mentioned some of their concerns, Mrs. Speedy was there and could explain some of the whys with special ed. I've gone to lunch with them again and talked about it and explained it. So I see this as something that's growing with these interviews for me in particular. These people have become friends now. I've also been able to have deeper conversations with people. And my son wore a sport jacket and tie. He really got GQ for last night. But when we went to men's warehouse, they said, well, what is this for? So we said, it's his graduation. So the clerk said, where are you graduating from? And he goes, oh, from Russell. I'm from Milpitas. This was in Fremont. And a construction guy was standing there, just got off work. And he turns around, he says, Milpitas? Where, where are you going to go, Russell? And so he started talking about it. And I started asking the guy questions about his time in Milpitas, same questions we were asking here. Jake walked out and said, you're doing this again. But it was, it taught me a lot and how to get to that deeper level. So I was impressed with that and very happy to be part of the team. And I do want to do a shout out to Priti because she really knows how to organize it and build it up. Sometimes on the first day, you'll say, where are we going with this? But you quickly find out what. So thank you.
I wanted to add to my introduction. I'm also a parent to two kids in the district, one at Russell and a one at MHS. Can we have the next slide, please? So what we also did is we read through our interviews and we wrote down quotes that really stood out for us. And we worked in groups to compile these quotes. And what we are looking for is common patterns and themes. And so these are the themes that we looked at that helped us identify unmet needs. And that's what helped us come up with this community problem statement. So you can see the statement. I won't read it out loud for you again. But basically, this was just the reoccurring themes that came up from all of our empathy interviews. And in the time that we had, we were able to come up with four separate root causes that are all contributing to this issue that we saw, which is essentially a missing opportunity for students to feel connected to their school, their community, and a lot of times to their teachers. So we came up with four root causes. I'll go over the first two. So you can go to the next slide. So the first one just has to do with the culture of how schools and our community and our nation, we just tend to prioritize performance over connection. So what, a lot of parents are looking for what a good school can provide. A lot of them are looking for high test scores, achievement and high grades. But that leaves out a lot of room for relationship building, actually feeling connected. And so a lot of students who, especially those who, those who do are high achieving, but also especially those that don't, a lot of them tend to feel disconnected. And so that was a reoccurring theme in a lot of the interviews. The second contributing factor is the, the typical entrenched way that parents and communities of, parents and families are used to communicating with schools. Oftentimes, it's top-down from the school to the parent and not a two-way back and forth. And so a lot of times, parents are just the passive recipients of communication rather than active partners in making decisions and kind of figuring out what's best for their students. And so in that way, not only is there less trust, less ownership, it's that just leads to alienation for all sides. And these two things I just talked about, they're not new problems, nor are they unique to Milpitas. And so it's just that we're bringing them up again because of the fact that we still are hearing it from these interviews, which is why it's important to point them out. Do you want to go over the next?
Can we get the next slide? Okay. So for our final two root causes, they, they surround through like inconsistent or fragmented expectations. And this can be from like, for example, probably there's like different phone policies in different classrooms, which can lead to that sort of just like disruption for students. And, and it can make hard for students and staff to feel a little bit supported and not on the same page. And behavior policies can also vary in classrooms and sites as well, which also makes it hard for students and staff within the district to be like on the same page as well. And then for our final root cause, it was about the pressure to conform to the standard way of school or like school community. And this basically is saying that we go to school to learn and that's it. We may attend an event or two, but not much connection going on. And it's sort of just like that pressure, like this is the way we've been doing school for a long time. And which kind of just like makes students and families feel that they don't really get a say or don't belong at their certain site. And I wanted to take the moment to do like a personal reflection about my time on the team. I joined this team a little bit later and it's really like, to say that I was terrified when I joined the team. I refused to make eye contact with anyone. But when I got home from that first meeting, I went on my computer and I looked up the definition of community and I was like, hmm, no. And the reason why I disagree with this definition of community that we see on the dictionary is because when going into fall of this year, it will be my 13th and final year in this district. And I may not, may not have understood it as a third grader in Sinnet, an eighth grader at Rancho, or a sophomore at MHS. But as a incoming senior at the Middle College, I can say that this community does, is, is a place where we can openly express our concerns, celebrate each other's achievements, and also work collaboratively as we did throughout these meetings together. And I just really wanted to express my gratitude for the work that I've done with such amazing individuals who really taught me to really speak up, even if like, you can probably hear my voice shaking right now. And really just how much this community has raised me from the time I was in kindergarten. And really is just an amazing experience to see that how I, as a student, could really be like this agent of change. And I originally came here for an idea for my senior capstone. And along with being, getting that inspiration, I've also been able to remind myself why I'm a part of this community and really giving the why of like being a leader of this community. So I really like to thank the time that I've had in this community with such amazing people.
Next slide, please. So looking ahead, we don't want to just end with root causes, right? Our goal is to now create commitments that are antidotes to these root causes. And as part of that work, we know we have to continue to expand our team. So we are looking to add more teachers, more people from all of our secondary sites, particularly our largest school site, MHS. We also invite board members to be part of this. And then the idea is that with those root causes, with our commitments as anecdotes, that we pilot a parent engagement or a family engagement, a community engagement event at each of our secondary sites that's trying to make sure that we are building these connections and continuing to foster community. And being reflective of how we are, where are we privileging, you know, specific cultural norms? Where are we privileging performance? But really building in that connection so that we can further the learning for all of our students. I also want to think that this work has been funded. A lot of the committee's work has been funded through the K-16 Collaborative Grant, which San Jose State is the fiscal agent for, and they have been extremely supportive of us. I've gone to them like three or four different times for money when it comes to like our STEAM milestones that we're building across. But also saying like, hey, as we continue to build these secondary options, we need to really engage our community in that process. And they've been super supportive. So they have also committed funds to support the ongoing work of this committee for next year. Any questions for us?
I just want to say to Nia, I remember you as an elementary school student coming to the board meeting, making a presentation for Earth Day. You continue to be well-established in this community as a student participant. I know COVID kind of took away the opportunity to participate in the Milpitas Elementary Olympics, but you continue to volunteer because it's the atmosphere that you want to, to experience from that standpoint. To hear you part of this community engagement project or design team really reflects your experience to be able to add to everything else. So truly appreciate what your engagement is. As far as the question for the team, I guess I missed this point in the beginning, but what really spurred the, the fact to have this community design team?
Well, it was, Greg knows this. We worked so hard with building the, the vision for the Innovation Campus. And similarly for Calaveras Hills, like the redesign work there, the Milpitas Middle College, I think all three of them are exceptional programs. But our enrollment at all three of those sites is not where we want it to be. So there was this moment last year, or maybe more than a year ago, when we were reflecting on like, we built it, they didn't come. Like, what's going on here? And so for me, it was a pause and an opportunity to really reflect on my leadership and some missteps and where were we not co-designing with our families? Because to take that risk at high school, it's still that moment where parents are making decisions about where their kids are going, but with their kids. And we're asking them to try something different as well. And so we needed to bring them along in that process and helping us, helping us understand what their needs are, what their priorities are, and making sure that the programs we're building reflect them.
Thank you. I think the, the way you're attacking or approaching this, sorry, not attacking, approaching this is, is really dispelling the fragmented expectations or experiences because you are listening, you are developing a cohesive manner. Not to say everything's always going to work perfectly, but also I think, you talk about this a lot, restorative practices, how even if something is not working, but you can easily bring that concern up and we can work through that together.
Yes, exactly.
I'm just going to say, I can't wait to your next phase.
Wonderful. We hope you'll join us.
I will make a point too.
Are there any other questions from the board?
No questions, but I would like to commend the energy that I see in the team from, you know, the student to the educator, to the team lead and everybody contributing their bit. And I've seen Nia since she was a little kid grow up. Her mom is always like, you know, we have to get Nia into something. So, yeah, I, I.
She's into a lot of good trouble.
Yes. Oh, yeah. We are pretty active in the community and getting the student perspectives to the table matters a lot to the district. So I really commend each one of you as a team member and looking forward to involving myself more to be able to understand and educate myself in the future. Thank you so much for the presentation.
And it's 9:30, so our energy is low. But Elaine was here at 6:30. She was so excited. And I hope you will go back and look at that list of the full participants. People were really, truly actively engaged throughout our meetings.
Thank you. One thing I want to point out, I'm sorry, vice president. One thing I want to point out is I was at one of your evening meetings where you had, I think it was eight students, eight high school students who came and in a fishbowl shared their experiences. And the remarkable thing was that while they had these experiences that made school difficult for them, they found their way in one of our pathways where they felt seen, they felt empowered, and they feel that they are being successful. So it's kind of curious that the impetus for this endeavor was how do we get kids to experience the pathways? And here were eight kids who said the pathways are what met their needs. So thank you for bringing people together to talk about how we can assure that our learners have these experiences that will prepare them for their careers.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mal, I just thank you for empowering the community participants. You know, hearing Elaine talk about her experience, her ability to communicate with others and what she learned from in her own household as a part of the experience. You recognize the hard work that everyone is putting in on behalf of the students to provide a variety of experiences until they find what, I don't want to say there's one thing that they can find in Milpitas Unified School District to meet their needs, but there are a variety of things. And if we continue to inspire, if the district team continues to inspire them to be curious to search, they're going to find what they're looking for. And really appreciate everyone's participation. We got a million stories about you, so we won't even add another one. So thank you very much for that presentation.
I have a question real quick, sorry. I was just curious for your community design team, how, how did you do the outreach and how were, they were selected? And then is there room for growth, like, you know, more members?
Yeah, next year, we're. Uh, yeah, next year we're looking to intentionally expand, so yes. Um, we started very intentionally in our, uh, community recruitment process. We really wanted to make sure that we were centering the voice, voices of our families, um, that are minorities in the community or are often less represented on different leadership teams and so on. Um, and so that work really started with our community liaisons, um, asking them like, who are the families that you are talking to? What are you hearing? Help us to recruit them. So, um, Claudia, Minan, Raquel, all three have been super active participants on the committee itself, but also in recruitment. Also reaching out to, to folks like you, um, to the board, to the superintendent, saying you have like the longest standing roots here in the community. Who are the people we need to talk to? Um, so got recommendations that way as well. Um, there was then like a small application process. We wanted people to really commit to this time because it's about not just sharing their stories, but also, um, gathering the stories of others and then putting them together. So we did that process and then, and then basically everyone that applied got in. But we were looking to say, are you, are you committed? Are you interested in not just sharing your story, but gathering, um, those of others? And at first people were like, oh, that, that sounds scary. Um, but as they dove into it, and Elaine's a testament, they made new friends through that process.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your time. So we have twenty, um, A two ELOP High Impact Tutoring Report, um, Air Tutors and TutorMe Education.
That's me too.
And we can be, um, mindful. I know that we're running a bit late tonight, nine thirty. We've got quite a bit to go, so, um, hopefully, um, the board will do the best that it can to minimize these questions.
Okay, yes, we will present the highlights to you. Um, and here to present is Dr. Shannon Sosa, our Coordinator of Intervention Services. She is presenting virtually because her little kiddo also is graduating from kindergarten today. Um, so, um, she is with us virtually.
Good evening, board. I am excited to present tonight's information regarding our Extended Learning Opportunities Program, primarily focused on our high-impact tutoring. Next slide, please. So with, and I know we've shared this before, the big theory of action with high-impact tutoring is that it supports students with their unfinished learning to help better access grade-level content. Uh, we have two vendors that we are currently partnered with, Air Tutors, who supports grades three through six with a virtual tutor, and TutorMe Education, who supports TK through second grades with in-person tutoring. Both programs support our students in small group instruction, mostly in groups of about three to four students. And all of that is with the Theory of Action with High-Impact Tutoring with the groupings, and, um, we do support with about ninety minutes per week. As you've heard me say at other presentations, our intervention TOSSAs are very crucial to the success of our high-impact tutoring program. Next year, our TOSSAs will continue to support our high-impact tutoring program, but we're also going to be building in some more direct student support, which we're really excited about. This, the TOSSAs will support, um, our English learners, primarily focused with our long-term language learners and newcomers in, um, supporting with tutoring support. As well as they will be supporting students who are multiple grade levels behind in ELA and math. And one, um, that we're really excited for, for next year, um, this is feedback that we gathered from the LCAP plus just, um, site um, feedback as well. They will be supporting with some social emotional skill building. So that could be, I think what a lot of schools have kind of considered is like a lunch bunch group where they, they're able to work on, uh, social skills. Um, but because this Extended Learning Opportunity is funded, it could either be before school or after school. Additionally, um, our TOSSAs will continue to provide PD and coaching, and they will be focused really around lesson study cohorts, who will be supporting our English learners. And with the lesson study cohort, there will be PD to help support, uh, language strategies for our English learners. Within that PD, our TOSSAs will support the teachers in planning and implementing into a lesson, and they will go through coaching cycles. So we're really excited about those next steps for the TOSSAs. Next slide, please. On these next couple slides, we're really going to focus in on stretch growth, since that's really where we want our students who are part of our high-impact tutoring, um, groups to really succeed. When students accomplish stretch growth, that means that they are getting closer to grade level, or they will help launch onto grade level. And stretch goal is created by I Ready, and that's based off their initial assessment in the fall. And as you're looking through the graph, just to kind of, um, have the same language, accomplishing means that they have met their stretch goal, or they have exceeded their goal. And then being on track is just based off of where they are in the school year. Um, so on the graph on here, it says that sixty-seven percent or higher, um, is being on track to meeting their stretch goal, because at that time, um, students were about two-thirds of the way through the year. And as you can see on this graph, um, we have about forty percent of our students who have met or are on track to meeting their stretch goal. And we are really excited to see that, um, the success of our high-impact tutoring for our low-income and our EL students, our English learners. And on the left-hand side, you can see just the cadence of how our students are engaging in the tutoring. Next slide, please. As well for Air Tutors and math, um, for the math portion, we have about thirty-four percent of our students who are on track or have met the stretch goal. Again, we're really focused and excited to see the success for our English learners. Um, it really seems our tutoring program seems to be working really well for them. Um, a group that we would like to see more growth from is our African ancestry students. So we have already started partnering with Air Tutors to kind of come up with some, uh, next steps so we can better meet the needs of students. So for example, um, we're asking them to review some of the tutoring sessions so we can review, you know, how are students engaged? What was the tutoring, what was a tutor doing to try to engage students? So really trying to come up with some action steps to better support that student group. Next slide, please. Our next slide here is focused on TutorMe Education, and this is focused on reading. As a reminder, TutorMe Education is with in-person tutors, um, and this was at our four elementary schools, which are identified with as our C-Say schools. And again, TK through second grade, um, we're really excited to see, we're really excited to invest in early intervention to help support unfinished learning earlier. Um, research just shows the importance of interventions prior to second grade, um, making a huge impact on student achievement. So as you can see, we have about thirty percent of our students who have met or are on track to meeting their stretch goal. We're really excited to see the impact of tutoring, um, on our student groups. Um, particularly excited to see the benefit for our special education students, African ancestry, and Latinx students. And next slide, please. Again, this is TutorMe Education for math. Uh, we see about forty-three percent of our students who have met or are on track to meeting their stretch goal. And overall happy with the growth that our students have made, um, particularly for African ancestry students and our special education students. And as you can see in the appendix, we, you know, we had different measures. Normally when we present, we share, um, stretch on, on track to for stretch, and then typical and on track for typical, and then no growth. You can see that further information in the appendix, but this presentation, we really wanted to focus on stretch, um, growth, since that's really where we're trying to see our students grow.
So we can pause there and see if there's any questions? Thank you so much for, um, hearing our presentation. Um, we definitely think this is an important practice, uh, to supporting us to come out of C-Says and making sure that all of our students um, and teachers have access to tier, tier one and tier two interventions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from board members?
Uh, how much longer is the funding, um, going to support this? The specifically ELOP funding?
I'm not sure if coordinator services can hear you, but, um, this is Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, which is ongoing and in the, uh, May revised, the governor proposed to increase the funding.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just, uh, ask the one question that, um, is there interaction with the teachers um, in understanding that the progress is being made during the tutoring? Because we know students in the C-Says program or the C-Says are identified, and are we seeing a reduction of referral to students to, uh, special education, uh, in support with the tutoring program?
So the first question in, in terms of coordination and conversation with teachers, yes. Um, that happens at an ongoing basis. It's one of the key roles that intervention TOSSAs serve. Um, so the teachers get progress reports of how kids are doing, um, in their tutoring sessions so that we can also make sure that we continue to meet the kids where they're at, both in the classroom and in the tutoring. Um, and yes, we are seeing, um, positive movement, uh, with our C-Says work, and, and that was why we also, um, in addition to Air Tutors layered in TutorMe, which was targeting the younger students. Um, you can see that we're definitely making more gains in reading, um, than we are in math.
Thank you. And, um, well, thank you for the report. Appreciate it. Thank you, Shannon, uh, for your time and consideration. Uh, we'll move to, um, action items at this point. Item Act Twenty-one, um, A two, Conduct a Public Hearing on the District Propose Buzzed Adoption for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, um, school year. A motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Scott, put a minute up on the clock. In thirty seconds, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion? Scott, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing in thirty seconds. Now it's down to five, four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item three, um, Approve Metro Ed District JPA First Amendment, uh, to the Master Business, Business Relationship Agreement. On February fourth, twenty-twenty-five, the Metro Ed Joint Powers Authority Executive Council voted to amend Master Business Agreement twenty-nineteen, Appendix A, to eliminate three million eighty-two thousand two hundred and eight adult ROP pass-through from Milpitas Unified School District to Metro Ed, effective January one, twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any additional discussion? Scott, any public comment?
We have no public comment at this time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item B, Motion, uh, Learning and Development B one, Conduct a Public Hearing on the District's twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Local Control Accountability Plan and Federal Addendum. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
One minute, um, motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. Um, all those in favor? Aye, I already said, okay, uh, public hearing. Well, I didn't open it yet officially, but a public hearing is now open. Thank you, Scott. In thirty seconds, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close.
We have a motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Scott, any public comment?
Nope.
I'm so out of order on that. I gotta fix that. Okay. I'll fix that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing any, seeing none? Uh, motion to close the public hearing. Item C, Human Relations, Adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dot forty-four, Provisional Intern Permit Education Specialists Mild and Moderate at Milpitas High School.
So, uh, as we mentioned in the last board meeting, we often have, um, educators that are going through their credentialing still, um, and need, uh, provisions to be able to teach behind the classroom. So as we have, uh, teachers going through the Epic program, not able to receive an internship credential from Epic yet, we apply for the provisional internship permit, which gives them the time to, um, fulfill the necessary requirements for the County Office of Education Program, Epic. So that's what the, uh, the PIP resolution is about.
Thank you. Um, are there any, um, Scott, are there any public comments?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Um, no public comments. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those, um, any additional discussion? Um, no, without any additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item C two, Accept Sunshine Proposal, MTA Initial Proposal for Reopeners of Collective Bargaining Agreement, CBA to MUSD. Is there any information you want to provide on that?
Just said that I need the board to receive the sunshine agreement?
Is there a motion to receive the sunshine proposal?
Motion to receive.
We have a motion to receive. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Um, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item three, uh, mm, I did the MTA, uh, Sep-, um, uh, Human Relations, item C three, um, Motion to Receive the Sunshine Proposal from the California School Board Association, Chapter two eighty-one, Reopener to the Milpitas Unified School District.
Uh, correction, California School Employee Association.
California School Employees Association. Ooh, that's too much. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Motion.
We have a motion to accept-
Second.
In a second, for the California School Employees Association, Chapter two eighty-one reopeners. We have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Any public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Superintendent's Office, Resolution twenty-twenty-five dot forty-six, Encouraging the Celebration of the Month of June as L-B, LGBTQIA+, Pride Month.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five point forty-six, Encouraging the Celebration of the Month of June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas, Milpitas Unified School District supports the rights, freedoms, and equality of those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer. LGBTQI+ and-
Whereas those who took a stand for human rights and dignity at the Stonewall Inn at New, in New York City on June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine, were pioneers of the LGBTQ movement, including two transgender women of color, Sylvia Rivera and Marsha P. Johnson, who were brave, visible leaders in the uprising at Stonewall Inn and- Whereas, in December of 1973, the Board of American Psychiatric Association voted to remove homosexuality from its list of mental illnesses.
Whereas, in 1975, the Civil Service Commission eliminated the ban on the employment of homosexuals in most federal jobs. Whereas, on January 8, 1978, Harvey Milk made national news when he was sworn in as an openly gay member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors.
Whereas, the LGBTQIA+ community has many historical figures that climbed to the top of their respective fields, such as WNBA stars Cheryl Swoops and Sue Bird, Olympic figure skaters Brian Boitano and Johnny Weir, tennis stars Billie Jean King and Martina Navratilova, Olympic gold medalist diver Greg Louganis, and U.S. women's soccer star Megan Rapinoe, actors such as Ellen DeGeneres, Jodie Foster, and Neil Patrick Harris, and musicians Elton John, Ricky Martin, Freddie Mercury, and Sam Smith.
Whereas, in October of 1979, 75,000 people participated in the National March on Washington for Lesbian and Gay Rights to demand equal civil rights. Whereas, on August 5, 2004, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals determined in Smith versus City of Salem that transgender employees are protected from workplace discrimination under the Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964.
Whereas, on October 28, 2009, the Matthew Shepard and James Byrd Jr. Hate Crimes Prevention Act was passed by Congress and signed into law by President Obama, and the bill expanded existing federal hate crimes laws to include crimes motivated by victims' actual or perceived gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, or disability.
Whereas, on June 26, 2013, the Supreme Court of the United States ruled in United States v. Windsor that Section 3 of the Defense of Marriage Act was unconstitutional and that the federal government cannot discriminate against married lesbian and gay couples for the purposes of determining federal rights, benefits, and obligations.
Whereas, on June 26, 2015, the Supreme Court of the United States in Obergefell versus Hodges decided by a vote of five to four that the Fourteenth Amendment requires all states to license marriages between same-sex couples and to recognize all marriages that were lawfully performed out of state. Whereas, on May 13, 2016, the Departments of Justice and Education released joint guidance to help provide educators the information they need to ensure that transgender students attend school in an environment free from discrimination based on sex.
Whereas, in June of 2020, the Supreme Court of the United States decided by a vote of six to three that one cannot be fired simply for their sexual orientation or gender identity under the Civil Rights Law of 1964.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education recognized that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQIA+ rights are human rights and are protected by the Constitution that all Americans should be treated fairly and equally, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. The struggle of protesters and countless other LGBTQIA+ people for equality encourages the celebration of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month to provide a continuing opportunity to learn about the discrimination and inequality that has faced and continues to face the LGBTQIA+ community. Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on June 10, 2025, by the following vote.
Scott, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
With no public comments at this time, is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, motion carries. Hey, Scott, nice job on that. You knocked that one out the park. Item 22.
I just wanted to let staff know that we will have mandated training on supporting those within the LGBTQ+ community. It's a mandate requirement for all of us, starting July 1st.
Awesome. Thank you for that, Damon. Consent items. Consent items are considered routine.
You skipped, um, there's one more resolution.
Here we go.
Small print.
Thank you, man. Item D2, Adopt Resolution 2025.50, The Education Equalization Endowment Act.
Resolution 2025.50, The Education Equalization Endowment Act. Whereas, California's school finance system continues to be shaped by outdated education funding laws, such as Proposition 13 and Senate Bill 90, which no longer reflect the needs of a 21st-century public education system or California's current economic reality in 2025 and...
Whereas, the local control funding formula has made important strides in increasing equity, but substantial per pupil funding gaps remain between districts, leading to deeply inequitable student experiences across the same geographic region in different zip codes and...
Whereas, Santa Clara County is home to 31 school districts, serving over 260,000 public school students, including significant populations of English learners, students with special needs, students experiencing poverty and homelessness, and foster youth, all whom require robust sustained investment to reach their full, unique potential and to one day participate in the local economy and achieve economic mobility and...
Whereas, wide disparities exist in per pupil funding across Santa Clara County, which continues to grow while all performance expectations are consistent, despite serving students with the same high-cost, innovation-driven region and...
Whereas, this equalization endowment funding opportunity will positively affect student access to support services, academic intervention, mental health services, special education programs, STEAM programs, arts education, enrichment opportunities, and safe facilities to close opportunity gaps and...
Whereas, this mechanism will help districts attract and retain highly qualified teachers and staff with competitive salaries in order to further diminish opportunity gaps and...
Whereas, Senate Bill 743, The Education Equalization Endowment Act, introduced by Senator Cortezzi, proposes the creation of a state-funded endowment account to equitably support less well-funded districts like Milpitas Unified School District without reducing existing revenues for more-resourced districts and will invest surplus state funds into long-term, needs-based educational funding and...
Whereas, SB 743 represents a practical, forward-looking solution that upholds the promise of equity in public education by ensuring all students, regardless of zip code, have access to the resources they need to succeed.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Governing Board of Trustees of the Milpitas Unified School District strongly supports SB 743, The Education Equalization Endowment Act, and urges all school boards in Santa Clara County and throughout the state of California to adopt this resolution in support of the bill and the principle of fair, adequate, and sustainable public school funding for all students.
Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the Office of Senator Dave Cortezi, Governor Gavin Newsom, the California State Board of Education, the Santa Clara County Office of Education, local and regional elected officials, in the support of statewide legislative action to remedy longstanding funding disparities. Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on June 10 by the following vote.
Scott, are there any public comments?
I have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you, Scott and Superintendent Jordan for putting that together. Really appreciate it, and we'll make sure that that gets to all the designated locations. Now we're on consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board staff or public request that a specific item be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Are there any items to be tabled or removed for discussion or correction? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adopt the consent items?
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt the consent items. We have a second. Any additional discussion? Scott, any public comments?
No public comment at this time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, motion carries. Scheduled for next board meeting, June 24, tentative study session 5:00 p.m. Tentative close session 6:00 p.m., open session 7:00 p.m., hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, Around the World Languages School. Any additional announcements or reminders from board members or executive cabinet?
Jack, go ahead, Superintendent Jordan.
Milpitas High School graduations tomorrow night, and then we have Milpitas Middle College High School and Adult Ed on Thursday.
I just want to wish our Vice President, Kelly Uchwana, a happy early birthday.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other, any other announcements or reminders? Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. There's a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any...